Okay.
So I have a variety of topics that I wanted to report to you on and then I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. First of all, I wanted to let you know that there is a new video on YouTube. It's about eighteen and a half minutes. I did summarizing the last board meeting. So as I mentioned in my last visit with you, after every regular board meeting, I'm going to make one of these videos so that the community can stay up to date on what the hospital board is working on. So that one's out there. I checked before I came down. If you search Sublet County Hospital, I'm about the sixth one down. So encourage the community to take advantage of that. Wanted to touch on two issues you may have heard about through the community grapevine. The first one I'll refer to as the drains backing up or the black water flood that we had. So there have been a number of sewer issues. Some of it is related to construction debris that was in the pipes that hadn't been properly cleared out by subcontractors. So we're having the all of the lines scoped to make sure that they're clean and we don't run into any more of these problems. In addition, in a couple of the drains that were in rooms that weren't were originally planned to be plumped, but then got design changes, they're putting not a plug, but sort of a one-way vent in it so that it wouldn't allow anything to come up. But if something were to try and drain through it, it will. So hopefully that one is behind us. And then over the weekend, you may have heard that we had a little bit of a flood on the patio going out to the playground from the Heritage Home. Above all of our canopies, the drive under canopy or the walk under canopies, those are dry fire protection systems. So the pipes don't have water or antifreeze in them. They're just pressurized with air. And then if a sprinkler were to go off, the air comes out. The system then in essence alarms and it floods itself with water. So in the area outside of the dining room, if you know where the grand piano is, and if you don't come up and visit, and I'll show you where the grand piano is. But just outside toward the playground, there was a it's a two or three inch pipe that the compression fitting we think wasn't properly typed. And the pipes separated. So then lost air pressure, system alarmed, and it flooded it with water. So then hundreds, if not thousands of gallons of water being sprayed up into that soffit area. So as I came down today, I saw guys out there inspecting to see both what the repair is and then making sure that there are no other seals of that type that haven't been properly torqued down. So hospital was briefly evacuated. We had no patients at the time, so that was just staff getting a fire drill. Nursing home wasn't affected by it, but you may have heard about it through the grapevine. I figured I'd just tell you straight up what happened. This is one of those finishing touches when you're moving into a new building.
Sure.
That the the good news is that the system worked as designed. It alarmed, staff responded appropriately, and now we're making the repairs. I don't know whether or not I had talked with you last time I was here about some potential plans we have for the vacant space at the sublet center. So if you think about it, the sublet center is in two different parts. The part on what I believe is the the south end is where we have the independent resident apartments. And then on the north end, there were three different wings. You could think of it as a capital T, which is where the nursing home residents were. That now is vacant. So we're looking at using that space in a couple of different ways. So immediately, so over the next two months, we're going to be moving a number of offices, including mine from the hospital campus down onto the sublet center campus. We're trying to make room within our clinic space for more clinic capacity. We have scavenged over the years numerous exam rooms or physician offices and turned them into other hospital staff space. We need to convert them back so that we can actually have more doctors' offices and see more patients. So I'll be moving down. Looks like finance department will be moving down a number of others. So we're going to start using the space that's currently sitting vacant. The next thing we want to look at is the possibility of what I'll call rehabbing the nursing home units into short term, short-term dormitory space for traveling staff. This morning at the county commission breakfast, we talked about issues with housing. Well, we face that as it relates to bringing in temporary staff and where do they stay? So if we can create again what I call dormitory, and the reason we're calling it dormitory is because the rooms don't have showers. They have their own bathroom, sink and toilet. But it would be a community shower, so like a hostel environment in Europe. So we'll be talking to the city about whether there are steps we need to go through in order to do that rehab. It wouldn't involve any construction. We're not going to be taking walls down or anything. It would just be cleaning up the space, taking down the ceiling curtains, repairing the walls, painting, potentially putting new carpet in and then furnishing the apartments. But that will allow us to have resident space for our temporary travelers in the short term. And short term, I'm defining as six months from now to about three years. Beyond three years, the project that we're looking at is converting that space into assisted living. That's going to be a much bigger project. It will involve construction because the rooms currently aren't big enough for an assisted living apartment. Assisted living should be somewhere at least three hundred square feet, probably up to six hundred. So we would be taking two of the current nursing home rooms and combining them into a single apartment. So we will first have to do a project design phase, actually work up a design, what it would look like, and then come up with a project budget. And then we'll have to do fundraising. So then that's a combination of grants and philanthropy. And I had two specific questions. One related to CDBG grants, community development block grants. In some communities, those have been tools that the hospital has used in partnership with local government to fund projects of this type. So I don't know whether that's something that works here in Pinedale. So that's a question for you. And then second, are there other avenues that you're aware of that would lend themselves to development of assisted living space? Again, looking out two, three years into the future. So I'll pause and and get your feedback on that. So the CDBGs, is that something this community has done?
Not that I'm not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So it's something that you're questioning with no knowledge base to draw from.
So so in my experience, community development block grants have been embraced when they generate jobs. And so for the assisted living unit, there would be two different types of jobs that would be generated. One would be the jobs while we're remodeling the space of construction jobs. And those would be temporary in nature. But long-term jobs would be the staff that would actually run the assisted living unit. So again, speaking from the way that I've done it in the past, this project would lend very, very nicely to CDBG. Is there a economic development presence in town? Is that who I would talk to?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Yes, Clayton.
On community involvement block grant program, it is something that Sublet County is eligible for. But I do believe that instead of grants, we can actually qualify for loans instead, given the fact that we do not have any sales.
So if the fifth word passed,
then we would be eligible for grants as opposed to loans. But those are, yeah, we can can access dollars from Cheyenne for those types of things.
Thank you. So so a lot of work to be done. I just wanted you to know that we're not looking to let the space it vacant. That both in the short term, a two or three year timeframe, we think we can use it in a way that will address current needs. And then in a longer timeframe, we think we can provide a new service that the community currently doesn't have, and that would be assisted living.
So with that assisted living, Medicare and Medicaid, those those do not pay for assisted living units, do they?
Typically, they do not.
So it'd be.
Medicaid sometimes will.
Mainly out-of-pocket living for the residents.
So this would be an example would be folks that we currently have in sublet center who over time are no longer able to be independent, but aren't ready to go into skilled nursing care. They need that intermediate level. So they would be private pay. And so this would be a natural transition for them. Some states, so I did an assisted living center in Colorado, and fourteen of our twenty units were Medicaid certified. So depending on the state program, there may be some element of Medicaid benefit available. Medicare is not part of that. So moving on, I wanted to give you a quick update on the finances. You know, the hospital only opened in in the fourth of August, but these are numbers from September financials. So from an expense perspective, September was a good month. We were about a hundred thousand dollars below our expense budget, including on salary and personnel costs. So from an expense perspective, September was a pretty good month. Where we had the challenge was revenue. So from a revenue perspective, September was a very weak month. If you look at just overall revenue, gross revenue, we are about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars below budget. And then we have contractual adjustments. So if we bill an insurance company a hundred dollars, they're going to say of the hundred, we're only going to recognize eighty, and of the eighty, we're only going to pay you sixty. So that forty dollar difference, we would write off as a contractual allowance. So our contractual allowances were higher than budget by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for the month, you put those two together, our revenue was below what we had expected by about one point two million. We then have other non-operating income that we do, I call it below the line. I'd like to know how the organization is operating from patient revenue, and then we have other revenues. So once you added that in, our loss for the month was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a significant amount, not something that's sustainable. But for an organization that's only been open a couple of months, it doesn't surprise me. As I mentioned at the breakfast this morning, we need the community to change some of their referral patterns. So rather than automatically driving to Jackson or Rock Springs, we need them to give us a chance because there are many services that we provide today that six months ago, we didn't provide mammography. You can get your mammogram locally. We do MRIs now that we didn't do before. But I know that one of the things that we need to do is provide more capacity in our clinics. And so I have a meeting scheduled with my medical staff a week from tomorrow to talk about some ideas that we have for how we can actually increase capacity. Because if you come to the ER today and you don't have a doctor and you need to be seen and follow up in two days, right now, I'm very limited on what I can offer you as far as a physician to see you. I need to fix that. So that when you need follow-up, I have a doctor that's open and could accept you. So that's something we're already going to be talking with the medical staff about. And we're taking a couple of other steps to increase our volumes and reduce our expenses. So we're going to be doing some targeted marketing, not this huge glitzy marketing campaign, but we need to make sure that the community really is aware of the capabilities of their new hospital. So we're going to be doing some marketing around that. And then we're going to be working with our ED staff. We have a contract with an external ED staffing agency for the physicians in the department. I worked with Dr. Burnett and Ryan, and we've come up with a new model that the medical staff has approved, the board has approved. So beginning the fourth of January, we're going to be staffing the ER with just local doctors. So mostly physician assistants. So Ryan and Noah and Kelsey and Christie will be the four physician assistants. And then we're looking to hire one physician to be the medical director. But that's going to save us well over a million dollars over the current budget. And most of the care will be provided by local people, people that folks know. So we're excited about that. And then I'll end by giving you some actual volumes of what we're seeing. So the census in the Heritage Home as of today was thirty-eight. And we are planning to admit four to five more residents to the memory care unit. So by the end of November, I expect the volume in the Heritage Home to be about forty-five, which is more than it's been in a long time. The ideal in my mind would be about forty-seven or forty-eight. I always want a bed open. So if a person's grandma needs to move in tomorrow, we would be able to accommodate that. But I want it only to be one, two, maybe three beds that are open. So good volumes in the Heritage Home. Just a couple of quick things to give you a sense of the volumes in other departments. Hospital lab has performed over eight thousand tests since we've opened. Imaging department in August did two hundred and four procedures in September, three hundred and twenty, October, three hundred and three. We've had, since we've opened fifty-five admissions in the hospital, that accounted for a hundred and ninety-one patient days. Our average daily census is just over two. And we've had seven hundred and eighty-nine visits in the ER. On average, we're seeing about seven patients a day in the emergency department. Those were the things I wanted to get you on. I'm happy to have questions on any other topics you might have for me.
Thank you, Bill. Questions, please.
Bill, I had somebody reach out that said Wyoming Business Council might be an opportunity to help with some of your housing. We actually have a local community member that serves on that council. I'm Cassie Crump. So reach out to them. There may be some opportunities through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what I don't know. Right? So when you start talking about the vacant tee and moving administrative offices into that portion of the old, old sublet center. I need to question, is that utilization that the hospital is allotted to to use because the county put forth twenty million dollars specifically for the sublet center as a standalone unit, not inclusive of the hospital district?
So so this isn't on the hospital campus. This is sublet center down here.
Well, thank you. I wasn't. Thank you for the clarification.
No, I I apologize. I didn't mean to mislead. So this is moving off of the hospital campus down into.
It's a good move then. Thank you much.
Yeah. So it's offices that are sitting vacant today.
Yes, thank you for that. Okay. Any further questions? Bill, questions from attendees?
I've got a comment and a question.
Okay.
They're each separate, by the way. So go back to having the local doctors here understand that. But and I'm going to use me as a prime example as an individual. I've my my provider had been in Jackson for ever since I was this big. That's not going to change. And the reason it's not going to change is because when I say to him, hey, I've got an issue. Would you come down here? He's going to look at me and a big old grin and say, no, you're going to come up there. So that would be, in my mind at least, that's a huge hurdle because I'm not the only one with that. There's folks that have been, you know, they go to Idaho Falls, they go to Jackson, they go to Rock Springs. So I'm not certain how you're going to make this occur, especially with folks that are older. Now, the younger people, yes, I understand. You probably can get that to occur. So but here again, I'm using myself as an example. And, you know, I went through three or four doctors that have retired over time, and I've just continued on with that. Then the next issue, and you and I had this conversation. So I'm going to kind of put you on the hot seat for a moment.
Okay.
Fair enough. Explain if you would the non-smoking issue and what you feel like might be a remedy.
Okay. And so we are bound by regulations from CMS, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. And they mandate that anyone who receives payments from Medicare or Medicaid can't allow smoking on that campus. So this isn't anything local. It's not anything state. It's something from one of our biggest payers. It's it's a requirement. It's not anything we have discretion to say. Well, we understand what you want, but it doesn't apply to us. So we've got two of our residents in the Heritage Home. Longtime smokers, we have no expectation that we're going to get them to stop. And so what they have been doing is they have been going off of the hospital campus across the street toward the cemetery to smoke. That's very dangerous for them. And so we don't, we really don't want them to be doing that. I have asked we could offer them the option of vaping. Vaping can approximate many of the habits that you have with smoking. So the the oral connection, the ability to titrate your own nicotine level. So if we're able to get them to switch from cigarettes to vaping, I've said that we will provide the vaping products for them because I understand that's more expensive than cigarettes. But we can actually allow them a spot on the campus to vape. So they wouldn't have to go across the road anymore. If that option isn't successful, if we're not able to convince them to convert to vaping, then the only other option I feel is available to me is to look at putting some sort of a small shelter. What would it be to the east, you know, the west? Where the construction trailer was? I know that that land is currently owned by the city. But if we could put a small shelter right at that property line so that they wouldn't have to go across the street, but they would have as easy an access as possible. Is that an option? So that's the next thing on my list if the vaping doesn't work.
So vaping is allowed with with the reimbursement schedules.
With with CMS, yeah.
Yeah.
We can do vaping. We can't do smoking. It's one of those things that it may not make sense, but that's my understanding.
Okay, well, fair enough. Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
And if I can speak to your first comment, I understand how difficult it is to change physicians. And I've actually gone through that with my mom. As she has aged and as her needs have changed, and when she moves from one community to another, she has to find a new doctor. So I understand how difficult that bond is to break. I would suggest that there will come a point in time where traveling to Jackson will become problematic for many older folks and keeping care local. So even if I can't get you to change today, I want to have capacity that a year from now, if you say, I just can't drive to Jackson anymore, I have a good doctor that's able to take you in. And then, as you say, younger people or newer people to the community, I need to create capacity for them today as well. So I don't see it as an overnight fix. But if I if I don't plan for fixing it over time, then we'll continue to have lower volumes than we need.
Yeah, no, no, I I certainly understand that and appreciate your forward thinking from that regard. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I ask a little question here. So so does Medicare, Medicaid come and check facilities?
They do.
Because I was in Rock Springs, you know, the hospital down there had to get blood drawn. And they had an area there. You know, they take Medicaid or Medicare.
They do.
So what's the difference?
They're rolling the dice, in my opinion. Because if someone were to call and complain, then they will send what's called a complaint survey. And they will come and do an inspection. And then depending on what they believe to be the severity of the offense, you can get cited, you can put your Medicare Medicaid certification at risk, which for us would be huge. So so I'm not willing to roll the dice. It's one of those things that whether I agree with the rule or not, I still have to comply with it. I can't put the organization at risk.
Great. Had a couple of people approach me, Bill, pertaining to ambulance service. And this is just so I can give appropriate answers when I'm approached. An individual in the senior center gets has to be transferred to your medical unit. I don't know if it's factual or not. That's why I'm bringing it forward. But they can't do it by gurney being wheeled on the Please, please expand on that if you would.
So that's another, what I would describe as goofy rule, that we're not allowed to wheel someone down the hall. We have to load them into an ambulance and move them from this part of the building to that part of the building. And we're not doing it just to get an extra ambulance charge. We would much prefer just to be able to wheel them down the hall. But my understanding is that that's something that regulations don't allow us to do.
It's ass nine.
It doesn't make sense.
No.
I I would argue that a lot of CMS rules don't make sense. Like I mentioned this morning.
Of course.
You can't build a critical access hospital and open it from day one. You have to first build what's called a prospective payment system hospital, a regular hospital, and then you convert it.
Correct.
And and so in our environment, why do we need to do that? Everyone knows that the model for us is critical access. Why do they require us to go through this transition that financially is very challenging? And it's because the people who make the rules don't understand healthcare in our environment. They're used to a community where you have three hospitals in a ten-block radius that do heart surgery. Where in an entire state, we don't have a heart transplant program. That they don't understand what, not just rural medicine, but frontier medicine is all about.
Correct. Is there any way to ask for that rule to be set aside?
So I've seen this in other hospitals and that I don't believe that there is what I would call a variance process. No.
So why don't we just explore a four-wheeler with a trailer on the back and go down the hall? It's it's crazy. But thank you for clarifying that. And I can just tell everyone that asks accordingly. Thank you.
If we could, we would.
Nope, I appreciate it. Thank you. Bill, thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming to breakfast this morning. Always a pleasure.
Yeah, and I'll see you next month.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next, Kenneth Tanner, please. Hello.
Well, as a continuation from conversations at the last meeting, we've met with we met with Kirk Kelsey with Regan Mountain Aviation and got with Clayton and have written up a proposed contract for the upcoming five-year season. So we would like to entertain any discussion on that.
Did you end up with something that is usable and acceptable?
What is usable and acceptable?
Well, that's what I'm asking you.
The helicopter or you?
Yeah, the contract. Is this usable and acceptable to you?
It's oh, absolutely. It's essentially a continuation, except the only thing we did increase was for fuel costs. Kurt requested a ten percent increase just for cover the fuel, not knowing what it would ever do.
Sure.
And we did increase our pay schedule over the next five years. You can take a look at that. And just like in the previous contract that we had, every year it increased fifty bucks a day for the daily fee. And we need to hopefully to be able to to cover the costs. And then we increased our solid operation hourly fee. And again, those are the operational fees that we're able to ask for reimbursement to the states or council.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there any change from my discussion yesterday? Or is it that applies for other counties, pay more, but rate didn't we pay?
Oh, that is definitely something we can entertain. I didn't change anything. I assume that was probably the discussion you guys need to have. I'm at the user end of it. But yeah.
I see that.
In my mind, we need to approach a change. In my mind, we need to approach a change. As I understand it, that helicopter, we pay the five hundred thousand for maintenance standby, whatever, to have it here. Park County, Fremont, whoever calls and uses it, it's double forty-five hundred an hour, or whatever the hourly rate is, which is the same as if we take it up in the air, it's forty-five hundred an hour, which is reimbursed, but those guys are they're getting the mail for not feeding the cow. So if it leaves Sublet County, in my mind, that'd be more of a rate than what we're paying.
So in the event, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Bradley, in the event that the uh bird goes to another county for utility work, pretty other work. That's a separate agreement between that county and uh Regan Mountain. It's not through Sublet County. And the contract does provide that if the bird is off doing utility work, we're not paying the daily for the time they are working for another entity.
But that other entity isn't paying any of the five hundred thousand maintenance and standby time either.
No, they're not.
So that needs to be adjusted in their rate, I would think, but we don't have any control if they leave here, you're saying.
So we can do it to it. So if we're gonna keep them as a contractor, we have to allow them to still operate outside of Sublet County and outside of um, how this is gonna off, but we still have to give them the ability to contract with other entities. Otherwise.
So our contract isn't five months continuous.
It is not continuous. They still have the option and the ability to do utility work for other entities. But that's how we keep them as contractors, as independent contractors and serve essentially.
Five hundred thousand is a great rate.
What's that?
This five hundred thousand is a great rate.
I can't speak to the numbers. I'm just like, explaining that's how, that's how it works. So if they're over in Fremont County setting power poles.
But so, okay, so if they're over in Fremont County rescuing somebody. Fremont County's paying the forty-five hundred an hour or whatever.
I don't know the exact details on that, but if they're requested on the utility work or other things, I think if they're requested by another county, that's their own separate request, or is it under us?
No, it, it's under us. I mean, we still.
Oh, so if it's a search and rescue mission, it's still under ours, but if it's a utility mission, it's a utility request, it's a separate, it is separate.
In, in essence, so whenever, whenever any county receives a search and rescue mission in which they respond to a state WEMA number is assigned. And so regardless of that search and rescue started in Fremont County, Teton County or Sublet County. The responsible agency has that same WEMA number. And so when they request, um, if, if, uh, if, if they request our helicopter or another helicopter, either the National Guard helicopter or other resources, it's all assigned to that same WEMA number. So when then it goes to the Office of Homeland Security um uh for reimbursement. That the, the, the entire cost is attached to that, um, that one WEMA number. What does WEMA stand for? Wyoming Emergency Management.
They don't use it anymore, but we're just stuck with it. Wyoming Emergency Management Association is just the it's like the IR number.
But that, that number pays nothing back towards the standby.
No, but, but you have to realize, so um, every, you know. Every time the helicopter is in the air, it's less cost to the Sublet County. So we want, we want people to utilize the helicopter, whether it be for utilities.
So some of that reimbursement that comes back.
No, we, yeah, we just, the, the time that the helicopter is out, we aren't paying for. Um, we're paying, we're basically, that five hundred thousand dollar is, is basically paying for that bird to sit on the tarmac uh for the entire five months.
So why would Fremont County or Park County and the others not wanna join us in this five hundred thousand dollar endeavor? I mean, I see why they wouldn't, because it's not costing them anything.
Right, well, it's, it is.
So why would Sublet County sit here and put our taxpayers on the book every time when it leaves the county?
I, I think we're, yeah, I don't, I don't think we're on the same, the same page. So when Fremont County requests the helicopter, um, the helicopter will go to Fremont County and um uh, complete that mission over there. Um, Sublet County isn't paying for the time on the ground.
Fremont County is getting the same benefit as if it was flying for Sublet County. I mean, if Sublet County called, they would still be forty-five hundred an hour if it left the airport. That five hundred thousand is just to have it here.
Correct, yes.
So it's a huge benefit for the other counties.
Thank you.
Not paying anything.
Right, but they don't, I mean, they don't have to use us and we, and the helicopter here is priority. We don't have to, you know, we can say no, that they aren't going to assist or they aren't going to do this other operation. So.
In my mind, they're, they're willing to split the five hundred thousand cost with us.
Yeah, I guess I see it as we're helping our neighbors out. I know financially that doesn't help your guys' bottom line by any means, but when the call for help comes for specialty equipment, there are so few around that I guess we've always entertained in good faith that they would pay for the operational cost during the timeframe of their search and that's it. Now, or of their operation. Not necessarily the daily rental.
So there's other options. You mentioned, what other helicopter you mentioned?
So the National Guard has a helicopter out of Cheyenne. Um, but um, we're talking time and distance, and that's another reason why um Park County, Teton or Park County, Lincoln County and Fremont County utilize our helicopter because time and distance. Um, by the time, by the time we, we get a hold of um National Guard in Cheyenne and get that helicopter in the air. We're already at the twilight hour and they're not gonna be able to, to do a mission until the following day. And that's, we're, we're all in that same boat. And I can say this, every, every um biennium, um we, we go, uh, we present our uh request to the state for reimbursement. Teton County and Sublet County are always one and two as far as um search and rescue missions within the state. Um, the other counties that have search and rescue missions, uh Park County, um uh, Big Horn. Their, their terrain, their mountains are areas where a medical helicopter or a um a, a regular um helicopter can get into and land. We can't do that in our mountains. We have to, we have to have short haul capabilities. Um, in order to get that individual to a, a medical ship or a medical facility.
So I, I'm not against that. I get, well, my point is that the bill payment, the rural school payment, it's gonna be a million bucks less next year projected. So here you're sitting with the five hundred thousand dollar bird, which we use and that's great. But those other guys, if they're gonna use it, they ought to at least pay an additional ten grand if it goes to their county or some, some number, I think.
I see.
Plus, plus their flight time, which is reimbursed.
So let's uh, let's put this in um, in reverse perspective. So um Sweetwater County has a Bearcat uh for a tactical team, tactical response team. Um, with the commissioner entertained, paying for part of that, as long as we could um utilize that uh tactical equipment, their team and their, and their Bearcat.
What, what's involved?
Well, that's just.
I mean, at one point we were partners on it, weren't we?
We were, yeah, yeah. But the thing is, again, is that time and distance. It takes them two hours to get to us. By that time, any, you know, critical incident um is either done and over with. Or, you know, we don't, we don't need them. So it's uh it's difficult. I mean, I'll be honest with you and I'll, I mean, whether I'm um biased or not, yeah, the, the helicopter is for us. It's for our volunteers. It's, it's for, it's, it's for tip top search.
I just don't think it'd leave the county.
Okay, and, and.
I mean, that.
We can, I mean.
Our taxpayers are on the hook for that five hundred thousand, that those others counties aren't.
Yeah, we can, we can stipulate that in the agreement, that it stays here.
Would it change, I guess, would it change the agreement? I mean, I'm assuming it would.
It would be useless, so it would sit more. Other than that, that doesn't change anything.
I don't know, it just seems that they're getting a lot of benefit from us.
They, they are.
They are. But it's, it's a tool that we're able to, to provide for critical, you know. Where, where I, where I think it's really gonna hurt is the, the cirque rescues. Um, inside the cirque, we've got those seven peaks, you know, metal climbing area. That whole entire inside of the cirque is Fremont County, actually. Because when you look, the horizon is actually the county line. So everything on that other side is Fremont County. But the accessibility of them getting there is impossible, and especially if it's a climate that's tied up mid mountain. Um, and to know that we're sitting here this close, it takes us twelve minutes to get there. And to not be able to help them, I think would be you know, I, I, I don't think that helps our rescue world at all.
Well, I, I agree. It's a great tool and probably needed in Sublet County, but and funds start disappearing that have been paying for it. Why don't some of these others wanna step up and help?
Yeah.
And they're talking to the sheriffs there in the same boat we are too. Uh, they're all facing, they're all facing cuts. Um, this has never been a part of their budget. Um, again, time and distance, I mean. Then we get into the fight, okay, you know, where does the bird stay? Who has priority? Who, who pays the insurance? Who, and it's um, it just, it gets convoluted, the fact that everybody just ends up saying, well, we, we're not gonna do it. So, and we've done, we've gone through this with the search and rescue boat, um, with the Bearcat, um, the helicopter when it was first, um you know, brought to, brought to Sublet County. We did, we tried. So, but it all, it all, it all meets with the same um hesitation and and uh the uh not agreement, so.
If I may, Mr. or Chairman and Commissioner Bradley, um, I think if we kind of change the rules with this helicopter, I really see it being a detriment to the other services we provide. And the number one is the boat and our side scan sonar. And ROV and being able to help with drowning victims. We're the only unit in the mountain region right here, and we're the only unit in the state. So if we're not gonna let that helicopter out of county lines, then to me, then that should set a precedence of it, the boat doesn't leave. Um, the latest side scan sonar and ROV was, was actually bought with partial funding from um oh, ERPG money, is that right? And from Homeland Security. And with the knowledge that that would be available for, you know, statewide um usage.
There is a difference. I mean, that boat's not costing us in what this helicopter is on an annual basis, is it?
No, by no means, yeah. But it's just the fact that you have a tool that's able to help other counties. And um you know. I did crunch a few numbers and we throw out this five hundred thousand and that is what I request every year from you guys. Just to kind of have um in that line item for the helicopter contract, but we have never paid more than four hundred and fourteen thousand in a year. So um, a hundred thousand is a hundred thousand, but um, you know, we've paid as little as two hundred and thirty-three one year. So um, it totally fluctuates with the, the need.
Any questions from board members?
You know, he's gonna get us an executive summary over the last five years. He's still working on those.
Yes, still working on that. And I'll just give it to you guys electronically, if that's okay. No sense printing it out. So then you guys have that access to it.
Yeah, other questions? Um, Commissioner Bradley raised an item that um is valid to a point, I presume. Willing to um accept a motion in regards to your thoughts.
I don't know where to go with it.
Okay, well, we still have to offer it and say good enough.
Miss, Miss Chairman, if you would, I bear with me for a moment. So I, I don't think the intent would be not to help where it can be done. But I sort of have to agree with Commissioner Bradley, the fact that this helicopter is a convenience having it here, not only for Sublet County, but for the surrounding counties. And you know, I, I can't understand why, if it's gonna be based here. It's costing us basically not quite five hundred thousand, but give or take. Why the surrounding counties that take or use it also wouldn't be amenable for some small part of the parking fee. That's what I guess what I'll call it. And my best guess is the way it's used and when it's used. You're not gonna get a lot of pushback. And I'm not saying a third, a third, a third. Cause we obviously use it more on this side than it would be on the other side. But I think some sort of a a share, so to speak, would be applicable. And I can't imagine, I don't care how destitute the other counties might be. Them being amenable to a percentage of whatever it would be, base it on based on the time they use it over there, based on the amount of, of uh issues they have. If it's, and, and I don't know what that formula would be. Would it be fifty thousand a year? I don't know, pull a number out there, but at least have them a little bit of skin in the game for the time that it's sitting here and, and we're paying upwards of five hundred thousand for it. And I don't think that number needs to be one that's gonna scare anybody, but it just shows some acceptance of what is being offered from this county that benefits all the surrounding counties. And I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna hear a lot of feedback. You know, I'm in favor. And I think Max also in favor of that helicopter being here, being at your disposal, because it is important to understand that. But we're footing the entire bill for that thing to be here.
Absolutely.
And it seems like there should be some sort of a little share involvement there. That says, yeah, we wanna be part of that operation. That's my two cents.
And I guess I, I can't disagree here at all, Commissioner McCree. But who makes that decision? Who picks that number? And who gets the other counties in agreement with that? I'm not in a position to approach.
Their sheriff's office. They, they have to take it to their boards.
And again, and I put that if, if I was on the other side, if I was Lincoln County, um, I would say, you know what, we're just gonna um, we'll just call Teton County or we'll just utilize. If I was on the others.
But Teton County won't fly as cheap as this one, will they?
No, because it's their own, they own it. And they have to pay for maintenance, um, pilots. And so they're uh, at least they're more than double of what we're, of what we're charging, so.
So if the rate, if it just left this county at a higher rate than what we pay, maybe they get fully reimbursed for that rate. They're not out anymore, but if, if our rate doubled for it to leave the county, that'd be something that could be worked.
Yeah, we could, we could potentially do that. I look, I, I fear for the whole picture. Because if we, if we um continue to raise rates and we deplete the coffers of Homeland Security, then the counties will be paying for all of this. Not just the, the five hundred thousand, every search and rescue, which can, which the biggest one in Teton County was a hundred and fourteen thousand. I'm sorry, this was in the Grand Teton National Park, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for one mission. That will be incurred by the counties if we deplete the coffers in the state.
So those coffers are fed by hunting licenses?
Hunting licenses, um ATV, snow machine registrations and donation. Um, we are pushing for legislature. We just passed the license plate um to help offset some of that funds. Um, and they're looking at other, um, other revenue sources um to help um fill those coffers.
Not necessarily depleted, but pressure on them. Maybe legislature would act a little.
Uh, we've, we've, we've struggled every year to, to try to find money, to pull money from one place or another.
So they're very active. The state's our council speaking on their behalf of working with legislature, trying to find something, or working with uh, um, office and tourism. The state level trying to figure out how they can raise funds, looking for grant money. Um, and that is something that they are actively working on. Um, knowing the, you know, one big mission. And honestly, you can raise the cost that the gentleman that disappeared in um Yellowstone Park um this past year, that was over a million dollars. And, and they're gearing up to privately go at it again, um, cause they still have not been able to locate that gentleman.
Commissioner White?
So Kenan, um, oh, five years ago, we uh, we, we put together. So, Ken, um, oh, five years ago, we, uh, we, we put together a formal RFP for that. I think we had three. I remember right, three, three bids. Can you? I mean, we're, we're talking five years, um, you know, your $400,000 number, $2 million commitment to one company. Can you walk me through why? Wouldn't pull out a formal RFP for this again? And I know you touched on it at our last meeting, but. Could you walk me through that again one more time? Cause I'm gonna, sure, we're all gonna get questioned.
Do.
Why we didn't pull out a formal RFP group.
Sure. I think the number one reason is satisfaction with the, the product and the services provided. Um, we've had a consistent crew. We've had consistent pilots. And a consistent ship that has more than covered our, our needs. And for smooth transition, I had no issues with continuing services within. Um, the ship is adequate. It's not new and improved. You know, it's a, it's an older device. It's, um, the Huey. It's a medium duty ship. It's not the fancy lighter ships that are definitely have. You know, um. A lot more accessories. But when it comes down to it, we just need the workhorse that works at our altitude and elevation. And with a decent payload to get our crew and, and equipment in there. And more than satisfied. And I would love to see us working with them. I know that any newer ship. That we were, if we were to put out RFPs and ask for, you know, the performance at this. Bring us whatever ship you've got that will perform at this. We would not even be able to entertain, I don't think, the, the costs for those. Um. I have to speak on Kirk Kelsey's behalf, the owner of Rogue Mountain Aviation and, um. They have worked incredibly with us to try to keep the cost down. Um, in order to, to leave that ship here for our use.
But they, um, indicated that they, um. Are opposed or anti if we was to roll this out as a formal RFP?
Oh, no, I don't think so at all. No, I think what we're running up against like anytime is, is bidding. Um, the bids for forest service contracts already went out. I think that started in August. And so a lot of the medium duty ships. For our area are going to go where they can make a lot of money on forest contracts. Um, but we can entertain putting it out there. And in starting back at, at the building block instead of continuing, you know, just extending what we have.
I think for me, I'd go better if we did, uh, did do a RFP, just so we had answers to the, the art constituents of. Hey, did you guys get the, the best service out there? If you're going to provide this service, did you guys go through the process? And do it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to add one little bit to that. We're not obligated to take the high, the lower, the in-between. We're obligated to take what makes more sense. And I think by putting out an RFP shows. Due diligence, I'll put it like that, and looking at the numbers. And taking into past performance, part of that also.
If, if we were to do that, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it's just a thought, if we were to do something like that. We need to recognize that there's a chance that we could lose this opportunity that we have on the table right now.
Sure.
Someone definitely can go out, said it pretty short time again.
What did we do last time?
What's that?
You remember what we did last time?
It was a couple of months.
Okay.
I think we could do a 30 day one. 30 days, pretty standard in a lot of RFPs in my world.
Well, I'd support that. It's kind of left in the fragile.
Chairman, Chairman Bernard, make that decision, so.
Yes, please. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said and I'm.
It's kind of, I could speak, so I've, I've literally hung from a helicopter. I've flown in a helicopter.
And I'm sorry, who are you, please?
So a local resident.
Okay, great. Over to the microphone, please.
Local resident.
Oh, over, over here, I have one on the podium specifically for attendees. Thank you.
Eight, 10 years, hundreds, hundreds of hours. Flown in a helicopter, under the helicopter of all the different pilots. I've worked all those different teams. I've helped train all these guys we're talking about. You're not going to find a better pilot. Structure than Rocky Mountain. You're not going to find the bird that Ken is talking about is, like she said, it's a perfect fit for our mountains. So I just want to say, cause I'm sitting here in the audience, I just kind of want to add my two cents of you guys don't want to screw this up. How much earlier? Let's go, that's already a good deal. Now, that helicopter saved many lives, brought many people home. Much sense.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
So the training we've invested in to this point, would it change with every ship or is it pretty standard training?
Oh, it would absolutely change. We would have to probably, depending on what kind of ship. You'd have to figure out how we would rig it for short haul, which, what equipment, um, so. Rigging the, the ship for the short haul operation would be completely different. There would be additional costs needed to buy the appropriate. Um, attachments. Um, and then there would be the time of learning the pilots and getting the, the trust built and the. The, the team back up to spec, um, with new pilots and new capacity of the helicopter. Um, a helicopter may be faster, um, it may be, you know, lighter. It may carry more fuel, but it will change, you know, everything our time and the, um. I know like one thing we talked about last meeting was, uh, our time on a mission has drastically decreased. Uh, because of our fuel capacity and our payload. Those allowed us to take all the gear we need, all the personnel and the fuel to be kind of a one and done, go in. Take care of the mission and come back out and be done instead of having to, you know, uh. Bring equipment in and loads and then refuel in the process. So, um. Yeah, there's ups and downs, you know, there's, there's a lot better machines out there that will perform at that level, um.
Not to mention, it took us three years to finally get a radio. Um, into this, um, aircraft, just so we can communicate with dispatch.
Yeah, with this system has not been an easy transition to get communication in the helicopters. And that would have to start all over again.
Okay, are there any further? Comments? I'll open it up to attendees and those online if you have questions or observations. Thank you for that.
One more thing, Chairman, sorry. One thing to add, the helicopters are back on a search and rescue. When you remove that, it could be your time it takes to get into the mountains on foot, on horseback, on ATV to accomplish the mission. So now you're going to save money for sure. And I get it, see where you're coming from. But your satisfaction of the customer or residents that are freezing to death, they're bleeding out. There's your 50/50. And. That team is based around the helicopter. So when you lose the helicopter, now you have to find a whole other team that is physically capable of doing that job. Hiking at 16 miles into the, into the winds, on foot, prepared to do that, take time off of work. Spend a couple nights in back country, get them out. See what's getting out.
Thank you so much. Okay. Close for comments. Any action by the board?
I'll save my comments again, as you know, um. Five years ago, we heard, uh, heard the same thing in the ones we have. We was lucky enough to find these guys through the RFP process. I still feel more comfortable at least falling out an RFP. And being able to look my constituents straight face in the eyes saying, hey. We, uh, we rolled this out and we chose the very best deal and gave everybody an opportunity to. Make an offer or at least make a pitch that they can provide something better.
Sure.
Okay. Is there a motion?
We, uh, we roll out a formal RFP process for the, uh, the helicopter with a 30 day, um. Decision-making period.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and second for an RFP for 30 days. Uh, discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye? Opposed? Nay? So go ahead and open it up for an RFP. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, up next. Thank you, Ken. Lisa Copeland. Thanks for joining us. The purpose of this is so we see the department heads once a quarter. And when I started, I found that there were some department heads that didn't see us except for budget to budget when they presented a budget. And questions come up and it's getting to know what's occurring. And in light of. What transpired last year with our economy and specifically our budget. Um, we know that we had, uh, approximately $28 million in budget reductions for the county. And reflecting on that, we also are aware that it could continue something on our next budget. So we want to. Uh, become. As knowledgeable as possible. And also hear your thoughts so we can, um. Plan accordingly. That makes sense. Uh, for the IT, uh, we're looking at, um, first quarter expenditure fiscal year 25, this year fiscal 26. And what we look at is your salary is consistent, of course. Uh, and then we come down to service contracts and service contracts. We have, uh, dealt, uh. Um, of the $67,000. Or 466% increase. And would you be kind enough to explain what the contracts are that we're talking about? Is it something that is a one-time or how is this? An, address, please, Lisa.
Under contract services, we have, um, Wazit Tech. Which is our network support. And then we have DCI controls, which is our security camera. Um. So the difference in that is. I think the, the 82,000 is the, the contract for DCI controls came out. The Wazit Tech happens every month. So. I mean, I think Janice on this sheet shows the. The differences, but, but those are the two things that are primarily in that. Um, originally, originally when I did my budget, the new hire was in that portion, but. So it's part of that 232, 304 in my budget originally.
Okay.
Um, but then I think that'll move up into, we've created the position and then salary go in that new position, but.
So when we look at the contract services, would we anticipate the same thing next, end of next quarter or will it be?
Um, I pay DCI controls once a year.
Okay, thank you.
That 60,00304, it's once a year. The Wazit Tech, which is a grand total for the annual is 87,000. That gets billed monthly on their monthly bill of 72.
Thank you for that. And then we have office supplies. Um. Looks like none was spent last year. And then this year, um, 3500 and change.
Yeah, I had put that in, that was a bunch of ton, a big toner order that I put in and I put it in office supplies. And it created a negative $500 balance. So I moved it into. Um, IT equipment and supplies. So you'll see that in the next quarter. Cause they just did it, the clerk's office just did a journal entry for me for the, for the $3,000.
Based on that, I think that is, uh, misposted. And putting it into a different category is great, yes.
It's still in my budget. It's just moved from one account to the other.
Great. Office equipment. Um, new computer, maybe?
Uh, IT, where are you looking at? IT equipment and supplies? Is that what you're looking at?
Uh.
Oh, office.
Office.
That's kind of more for my office, just for my office.
Okay.
Any equipment for just my office.
IT projects unforeseen.
I typically have, um, $50,000 in there in that, um. The chat bot that we did with Civic Plus was not unbeknownst to me. I got the bill for that. That's where the $1,000 is coming from.
Great.
So that I just put $50,000 in there because sometimes big projects come up that weren't worth, so. When you're replacing servers and switches, I mean, it doesn't take much to use up 50,000.
Telephone, IT equipment and supplies. Um, I think next time this will also reflect the toner that we talked about. Is that correct?
Yes. And that, that account is where I buy all my computers, monitors and everything. And, and if you're looking quarter to quarter. That can be different because I buy big purchases at once because I get a bigger discount. So. I just bought 10 computers, 10 monitors from Dell and, you know, 20 some, $27,000. So. That'll hit the next quarter. But if you compared it to last year of the next quarter. I, I'm not consistent month to month on my equipment purchases.
Correct. Some quarters will be high, some will be low and.
But it's still.
It's, it's correct. It's, uh, just identifying how things are working. We have training. It's nice to see training expense there, Lisa. Thank you. Uh, annual renewals. Um, again, we had an increase in that at 30, just shy of 36,000. Keeping in mind the budget is, uh, 147,000.
Um, some of that, so we have our phone maintenance. The, that was a $14,000 bill with Maverick. Um, how that contractor was originally set up with Matt. We pay Wazit Tech and Wazit Tech pays Maverick. So that was one of the charges that hit that. Um.
Can we eliminate Wazit Tech on that, do you think, and save some bucks there?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't, it's still $14,000 maintenance. It's just how the contract was written, but, but yeah, I think next time we'll. We'll kind of pay, I'd rather pay them direct.
Great.
Then we don't have the delay or latency of them getting paid, but, but that's for our MyTel phones. So that's every year for the support for them, for all of our voice phones.
Great. And vehicle expense, uh, went up 20, 20 bucks, 15 bucks, which is fine. So what we're looking at, uh, an overall budget for you of 745,000. In change for fiscal year 26 and you, for the first quarter, you spent. $190,000 approximately. Everything seemed to be tracking pretty well on that. Uh, does, do any of the commissioners have any questions, comments, concerns? And again, this is so we have feedback going forward and we can help work together and identify expenses. Uh, cause next year we might have to, based on everything, cut more. And how do we do it effectively as a team? Good? Good? Commissioner Vickery? Excellent. Quick and painless. Thank you.
I had one other, you had a request for me to, and I had, had to email the gentleman, but to get a quote for the UPS, the big UPS.
Yes, thank you.
Side. Um, I had a gentleman from Bodek who I'd originally, uh, reached out to before when we did this in 2023. He came up, he did a survey and everything. I, I emailed him this morning. He hadn't sent me the quote yet, but, but I should have that today. And I went ahead and had him give me a quote for the one that's downstairs on the county side and the sheriff's department one. one because we've talked about replacing that one to just, we can look at both. We don't have a place in both ish, you know, this year, but you know, future plans. I mean, those, those things are designed to be modular to where you can replace the equipment and they're designed to last 15 to 20 years. But I know that one down underneath the clerk's office is more than 20 years old, so.
This is one Andre started in.
Yes. Yeah. And I, I mean, I haven't had any issues with it, which when I talked last time, you know, I haven't had any issues with it so far, it seems to be, but it's probably time before we go. Right. And and what it does is it keeps our, it's our core, it's where our core is. So it's where our main internet comes in and all of our communications. So it's probably the most critical location of across the whole county. The one that supports the sheriff's office is also critical because it supports power for 911 systems plus all the shares too. So but it maintains the equipment up before it kicks to generator, but for some reason it doesn't kick to generator. Yeah. So I just wanted to update you.
No, thank you for that.
I mean, I can forward that to you via email and you can look over that quote and we can talk about it.
And next time we'll move forward and replacing, we'll have the price and we should be in a position to replace accordingly. Correct? Great. Thank you. Judge Labuda, please.
Morning.
Good morning. It's great to see you.
Amy Nance, Chief Clerk.
Believe me.
So we requested this time so we could get a vote on having another magistrate from the circuit court judge. John Starkovich, he could be here today because he had an emergency court hearing that came up. And just with everybody's schedule, it's tough to, I thought, I just tend to do without him here. A little bit about John, I've known him for a number of years. He was in the armed forces and then he was a deputy sheriff over at Star Valley. And he got injured on the job and his worker's comp attorney convinced him to go to law school. And that's what he did. And so he's been an attorney, I think, for 11 years now. I used to do workers comp for the attorney general's office. John was an attorney for the other side for the worker. So he works for legal aid of Wyoming now, and that's a civil job and it's full, basically full time. And the reason we wanted somebody like John is because right now we have Clay Kainer as our chief magistrate. And when a criminal case comes up and we ask Mr. Kainer to set bond or see the person initially, a day or two later, that person could walk into Mr. Kainer's office and want to hire him. And Mr. Kainer could take it, where John just does this legal aid, which is more civil exclusively. So it doesn't cause conflicts. And that's why we're asking for another magistrate. Any questions?
Great.
So what kind of workload will he probably have? I mean, what?
Like what type of magistrate?
No, I mean, like every day, how does that work?
No, just if I'm on vacation, if I've got a personal conflict, just like Clay Kainer probably comes and does court for us 25 times a year?
Maybe.
Maybe. And
We use it mostly when, like say, judge gets sick or something, still have to carry on. We need someone to cover.
Yeah. So it's, it's pretty rare that comes out of our state budget. Doesn't come out of any county budget. And I think they're going to revise or amend the statute. The reason we have to come to the sub county commissioners for a magistrate is because they haven't changed the statute from when it was a county court judge, like what Judge Crowe was. And so now we're circuit court judge under the Supreme Court and the state, but they've never changed the statute. So that's why we have to come here.
Thank you for that. Understand. No questions, motion to accept?
So, so Mr. Chairman, so, so listen to one of those deals where we authorize it, but the other guy pays for it? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's very strange.
So why were you hesitating?
We need more of that.
Yeah, that really seemed like an oddity in this day and age.
So it's a good deal for you.
Discussion, questions?
This will be replacing Clay or in addition?
We're still going to keep Clay.
Well, I have no issue with it if somebody wants to make a motion.
Should we appoint him or just allow you to appoint him? We, do we have to appoint John or?
I think you guys are in the motion.
I think they will. And then we do the oath and file it with the
So you're asking us to authorize that? Is that correct?
I'd make a motion to allow circuit court to hire another magistrate for certain court duties.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Looking easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
See you. I'll pull my phone off.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
You guys all have a good day.
You too. We need a break?
Sure.
Take a 50 minute break, please. What? I was working on it. Like to call the meeting back to order, please. Up next on the agenda, County Attorney Clayton Malinkovich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I want to pull the marble to the roof discussion. We don't have documentation on that agreement and we're still trying to figure that out as to whether or not that exists. Just it is odd. So I want to pull that until next time. Mr. Greeno is here from visionary broadband to discuss that lease that we bumped from two meetings ago.
Great.
So, come on up. As you were, as you recall, this is the renewal for the piece above the rifle range and the current existing amount believe was
7200.
700, yeah. You all are discussing with Mr. Greenos, curious.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Thank you for coming. It's good to see you.
Glad to be here.
Thanks for the interest in the county, what you do.
Well, I have spent many hours in this part of the world. Working on internet. So we appreciate the support.
What we have is a five year lease with peers two additional terms.
Yes. On agreement.
Right. Consistent at 7200 year for the entire 15 years or is there an escalation rider on this?
There is no escalation rider in the lease as it's written right now. But we're always open. I mean, if you guys think it's, if there's something else that we need to do there, we'll can. We built that tower. It's hard to believe it's been five years, but get away from the noise up on top of the mountain up there. And it's worked really well for that.
You're on the other side from Mount Aries, is that correct?
Well, Mount Aries is up behind us. We're actually going from
Yeah, just, just next to the rifle range itself. Yep. Okay. It's been five years.
Yeah.
Way.
Yeah.
Good.
And it basically what it did, I was, I've been doing a little research on it. It didn't really gain us a whole bunch for customers, but it gave our it was the capability to increase our customer speed, things like that, that were available here in town. It's been good. It's been good for our customer base here. I mean, people, actually, most of them have higher speeds and less cost. Because the equivalent we're able to put up there now. So it's, we want to keep the tower and keep going with it. And it's definitely enabled us to we also had a lot of noise up on top, but there was some of our links going to outside towers, you know, crossfire and then pretty much suck that. It's helped us with that as well. So it's definitely been beneficial.
Great. Question, question from the board on this. Babe? Any comment from online? Comment? Comments closed and a lease before us with visionary five year term with two additional add-ons, 7200 a month. Oh, excuse me. I like mine better.
I wish I could pay that much.
Well, so do I. Any motions forward?
I have no problem with the contract, but you and the other day we had discussed raise raising rate over time. Is that pretty standard on all your towers or is everybody pretty?
Um, they're both, to be honest. You know, if, if I guess I would suggest if we can do a 600 or 7200 next renewal, well, I can write a new lease or an amendment to the lease and add a 4%. That's pretty much what our standard is if we have an escalator and it's 4% return. So will that be?
So they five years from now, you get up at 4%.
Yeah. And then it will just, it would, you know, as it progresses forward, that 4% will carry on going forward too. Yeah. So one thing, I'm a, I'm a customer of visionary, so I'm going to accuse myself of this vote.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the visionary contract at 7200 for this five, first five years, upping it 4% every contract thereafter.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bradley.
So just to clarify, they're they are separate contracts every five years. So this one, instead of what you're suggesting, we'll turn it into a, for all intents and purposes, a 10 year contract with that automatic bump. So you'll just need to remember in five years that that's what you guys wanted to do. I can add that.
Be documented somewhere.
So I think you could add that as a note there, or I can add it if you're anticipated to be 78 in that next term, or I can type it up and we can circulate for, for signatures.
Say type it up, anticipated to go 78.
Let's give it up.
Because in five years, who knows, who's going to remember what?
Hey, so, so, Ms. Chairman, I've, I've, I've got a question from up there. So would you anticipate somewhere in the next 10 years that communication towers are going to be obsolete and everything can be coming from satellite?
No, sir.
You don't believe that?
No. Fiber. It'll be more fiber optic than will be satellite. Satellite, irregardless of what Elon tells us, it all has the same shortcomings. Eventually, he's going to run out of room. And satellite has a latency built into it because the distance that the signal has to travel. It works well for emails, surf in the net, things like that. And satellite is one of the best, is one of the best ones that's ever been done. But the everything is going to go to fiber optic. That's, that's, that's what the future is right now. I mean, we're spending
A lot.
A estimate of 30 to 32 million in the last year pulling fiber into ground. Wyoming, Colorado, Montana. Union is doing the same thing. I mean, there's, there's lots of federal grant money out there that all of us are going after. We all bid on these contracts, you know, beat money and all that good stuff. And satellite is going to be great for the areas like Pinedale up here where they're in the trees and nobody wants a tower and they don't want to come in and dig up and put fiber in the ground or put it on the power poles. Then it's going to be a viable option for them. But going forward, no, it's going to be fiber. So it's faster, more secure. And it's easier to fix than a satellite. So, yeah, it's fiber optics. I, I mean, even my job within this company, you know, this is my seventh year, I think, with visionary and for five of those years, I leased tower sites. That's what I did. Now I secure easements and access agreements and right of ways for fiber. That's what I do. So
I just had to ask because it looks like we're going to, well, the artificial intelligence thing is the key word now. And so at some point in time, probably after I'm gone, I would envision everything coming from the sky, but I, I'm hearing you don't think so.
No, no. And in the industry, the industry would agree with me on that as far as where, where everything's going. And it is going to be fiber because there's so much more, you know, communicating with satellite, you're still using radios, just like we do with wireless in between towers here. And there's only so much information you can cram into one bit of frequency, whether it's, you know, however wide that band is, and eventually it gets full. Well, with fiber, you can keep, you can keep cramming more material into it and more material into it and more material into it. And it's one, you know, one strand that's just not much bigger than a hair can carry more information than you can even comprehend in an hour's worth of time. So yeah, the satellite is still going, it's still going to be a viable option for people to live in remote areas, but it's going to fill up too. And once it, you know, there's areas in the United States right now that you can't get started because their satellites are full. So
Well, thank you for that. I just, I just had to ask that question because it just looks to me like it's the future, but
Hey, it, it's, it's viable for people, you know, like yourself, where you live at, things like that, that you know, it, yeah. It's a good alternative. But as far as what's happening in the future, it'll, it'll be fiber.
Thank you for that explanation. Any further question, comments? Online? Great close for comments. I have before us five year lease, 7200 a year.
Director of the motion.
Remove the 4%.
Wait till Clayton gets back in here for guidance.
Sounds good.
So what's the figure going to be in the second five years? 78? Are you counting?
280. Plus 72?
So 70, how you get 78? Because it's 4% is only $288. So it's only going to be 7488, right? Well, we rounded, we'll come up to the figure.
We did. It was 78.
Yeah, but that's not 4%. 4% we can't have 4% and $600. They don't match.
It doesn't, it just says, I can re
Well, he just said 4%.
No, he, what Clayton is saying is he did not put a percentage in. No, he, what Clayton is saying is he did not put a percentage in here. He went onto platter.
Well, he was saying four percent, then we come up with more like eight percent. And what he was willing to go. Right? Did you say four percent?
I did say four percent.
Now we're up to eight percent.
I thought you guys said seventy-eight hundred.
Well, he did say seventy. I'm just saying, is it four percent or seventy-eight? Right?
We're gonna leave it at four percent.
Oh, for heaven's sakes. It's like the way you got.
Well, that's not even close to seventy. Four percent.
So four percent would be seventy-four eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Why don't we just round it seventy-five hundred and call it?
That's what I'm saying. It'd be easier to put.
But that's five years.
That's in five years. I don't know what, what, where we even. We just need the lease today for seventy-two hundred dollars and that's good for five years. And then the renewal, which is a completely different lease, it'll be seventy-six.
But we gotta document this.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The document that I just printed.
This one.
Well, that I just handed you says anticipated renewal on the next one at seventy-eight, which was what Mac had said.
Okay.
I can reprint another one or you can sign.
Well, he may not agree to that because he said four percent.
But it says Ed.
We're really talking about six hundred bucks. You guys aren't giving him the bump this year. So candidly, he's getting a free pass this year. You made him drive all the way down here. I guess that's his free pass.
Well, do you want to pay the seventy-eight or you want to pay the? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We, we gotta get him to agree.
I have a quarter in my pocket. We can flip it.
I'm gonna throw this motion out there here and you're gonna have to retype it again. Quite huge, Eric. So I, I'd make a motion to approve the contract in front of us for the next five years at seventy-two hundred dollars, anticipating a four percent increase on.
Save the number seventy-five hundred.
Yeah. And if he said yes.
Increase to seventy-five hundred. On future contract.
There we go.
That's been stinking.
So, so for me to throw.
It's four and a quarter percent. You saw it twelve bucks. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to get this to where it, it can work forward. It can go forward. So.
Four and a quarter percent. Well, in ten years, I'm not going to be here to worry about it.
There you go. Well, I don't think the rest of us are either quite honest with it.
So. Just why I'm understanding, I'm not putting a percentage in and I'm just gonna put the.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Fine. And we're at seventy-five hundred. That's seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're, we're all on the same page. Okay.
But that's for future. So how you documenting that?
Uh, the way that I wrote it is that it says renewed for one additional five-year term. That would be the total of the fifteen because we have the five and then you guys are doing the tens. We're anticipating one additional five-year term at an anticipated rate increase to seventy-five hundred dollars per year.
Hey.
And then we renegotiate the last five years at that time.
Somebody.
Yeah.
I'm sending it to planning zone. Thank you. Did you saw some elk on your drive?
I did.
Where'd you come from?
Gillette.
That's a drive.
Twenty miles south of Gillette this morning and there's about eighty head hill across the highway from me. Like, ooh. Fortunately, they were far enough in front of me. And I have an half hour journey to get here. Sorry, I need to cover this part of the room. Yeah. Because I'm getting my bright and smiling face for a couple of years, so.
Just so we're clear, you need a motion that no.
No, but yeah, it's, I think it's denied and.
Well, for a second, Chairman.
Take a second.
I'll say.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great. Opposed? Motion passed.
Use myself in my boat, remember?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thanks for coming over.
You gotta go all the way back to Gillette there?
No, I'm going to.
Using that tower too.
Big triangle. There you go. Seventy-five. That's all I've got. Your question, or I can give you a quick update on your industrial siding. The the funny request was approved.
I know. To think this led.
I found it.
Update you guys as it's.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thank, thank you.
Thank you for putting up with us. It's me, part of the job description.
There, there's certain parts of the world I really enjoy going to and there's certain parts that I go.
Don't forget to initial.
Where we fall. I enjoy this. It's in Wyoming and part of North or part of Montana.
You south. Start to grip with me like Sam.
Who's SCA?
That's me.
Okay, thank you.
Colorado is.
I thank you much.
It's nice to.
Hold it. Thanks. Should be good to go.
I can't send it. Uh, I get Mr. I assume you should probably.
Okay. Who do I need to have on there? Okay, we'll redo it. We'll email it to you for a second. Preston Schilling, same, everything else?
S C H I L L I N G.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. We'll do that via email.
And then we'll need a motion to authorize signing outside of.
Well, you guys already approved it.
Safe, good enough.
Okay. That's all I've got unless you guys have questions for me. Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Thought you just said you were gonna give us an update on industrial site.
Can if you guys like.
Yeah, because I got some questions, so. Okay.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, update on industrial siding. We had the hearing last week. Commissioner Vickery came and sat uncomfortably close to me.
Um, I didn't say that.
Oh, I did.
Oh, you did. Okay.
We were jammed. Suffice it to say, you, there were about sixty people crammed in a room that was comfortable for thirty. So it was, it was tight quarters. I had to, I was shoulder to shoulder with Mr. Vickery and I was trying, if I turned my head, I'd be in the fire extinguisher. So I had to be careful. Uh, but we were there. We got it done. Um, funny request for sublet county entities, including the hospital board, the, uh, airport board and the towns of Big Piney and Pinedale, uh, were all approved. Those were under my representation. Uh, town of Marlton had separate representation, but their request was also approved. So all of those things were approved. And I guess if you guys have any questions for me, you had questions, Mr. Vickery?
Oh, I've got two or three.
Fire away.
Not sure where I want to start. Well, I, I guess, I guess I'll start with the comments. I'm sure all of us have either heard or read Mr. Murdoch said about it coming before the commission to okay the fifth penny when in fact it is the responsibility, was the responsibility of all three mayors plus their city councils that brought this before the public, not the commission. I, wherever that has to be put out, needs to be put out so that we're not the ones that are getting the finger pointed at us when folks want to know what the devil are we thinking about? So that information needs to go towards the mayors, once again, of the communities, Big Piney, Marlton and Pinedale. That's where the answers need to come from. And.
Is that, do you want me to do anything?
Well, I don't, I don't care where it goes. It just needs to be out there so that folks don't call wondering why we did that.
So just to be clear, as I understand it, and it brings me no greater joy than to say that someone was wrong about something. That's why I went to law school and that's why I have the job that I have. Um, but I did discuss it with Mayor Murdoch when we were down there and he, uh, asked me about it and uh, he did acknowledge that there was incorrect information in his, uh, in his letter to the editor. So as you had stated, Mr. Vickery, you are exactly right. Uh, it also brings me great joy to say that. That the three towns being more than, uh,
Didn't know I understand that.
They passed it. And so then it will go on the ballot and it was not the decision of sublet county. So just clarifying what you said, if there's any questions.
Right. So, so was Mr. Murdoch in your conversation gonna recant his uh, statement in the paper? Do you know?
I don't believe so, but though the decisions are already made, it does not come before this board for decision, nor did it come before this board for decision.
Okay, so then I have one more question.
Fire away.
And I don't know where this is. I don't know exactly how to pose this, so I'll just spin it right out. So in one of your emails, you said it comes before this commission to determine how much information the public should have. I don't think there's a question. I think every tiny pebble of information needs to be turned over to the public, either for or against knows exactly what they are voting for or not. Because as I read your comments, it said, yeah, maybe we had not given this information. Maybe we can give them this information. I think we need to give it all to them, whatever all is, as we go forward.
So to clarify my email.
Yeah.
Uh, I was updating you all the email on this. To clarify it, I was noting that if you wanted to, that this board could provide educational information such as what is a fifth penny? How does it work? So on and so forth, but cannot campaign either way because you are governmental body.
No, understood that part of it.
Okay, that was.
But that's not how I read the email. And if people saw the email, they would have to agree. Are you guys holding something back?
No, just to be clear, I am not suggesting that anything be held back. I am just suggesting that as a governmental entity, sublet county cannot campaign or push any, uh, any objective forward. Sublet county can if you choose to, and this was my suggestion, that if you wanted to, you could have a discussion about creating or asking someone to create educational information to go on the website.
Okay, so let me take this and I'm just speaking for me for a moment.
Understood.
So, so there's a lot of little parts and pieces in this thing. The general public won't understand. I don't even understand it. For instance, what in fact is going to be the total amount? I've got it figured out of where it's kind of like seven point three million is what I think sublet county is going to get. You're in that ballpark.
Correct.
Is that, that's pretty close.
Yes, and we're, and we're, I want to make sure that we're talking about two different things. So we're.
Yeah, I know.
We're somewhat split on what we're somewhat conflating two different issues. Yes, a fifth penny is required in order to receive the seventy to seven point three million and change. But there, like, those are two somewhat separate issues. There will be other tax, there will be other revenues that result from a fifth penny in addition to this, these dollars.
Oh, I understand perfectly well. So if I go buy a car that costs in today's world, sixty-five, seventy thousand, I can look at another penny. Let me think what that would be. Oh, that's only another six hundred and fifty, seven hundred dollar taxes on it. Is that pretty close? So everybody, so everybody in this community is gonna have to pay for whatever they buy that has a tax associated with it, an extra penny. And we're gonna do that because we think we're gonna get a serp loof, sir, excuse me, a surplus from the, the folks that are putting in this facility. Now, we go back and what we're looking at is we're gonna spank on the people that are supporting this county through the energy, through all the service entities out there for another penny. That in some instances could be difference of when they look their bottom line over and say, maybe we're gonna have to let this service company go because if we don't, it's gonna cost another four, five hundred thousand with this extra penny. I don't think we need to take that chance is what I don't think.
Great. So, and just to be clear, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So that type of a message of I don't like, or I don't think we should, that is the type of message that the county cannot do.
Understandable. And I'm just, I'm talking from my perspective.
Understood, understood. I'm just trying to draw the line between educational and campaigning. So for example, the county would not be able to pay for bumper stickers that say, it's the effect of stop complaining about the tourists, take their money, vote yes on May four. So the county wouldn't be able to do something like that, but the county could put on its website, uh, information about when the election is, when it will take place, what number of, like, what potential dollar amount uh, it would look like for county revenue based on twenty twenty-four numbers, so on and so forth. And it can include all of that educational information. So my only suggestion in the email was if the county wants to put something out on the website, you all can make that decision. That's my only suggestion.
Well.
So then info can come forward at any time if we decide to right now from year till election.
Correct, correct. But it can only be educational in nature. It cannot push one way or the other. So for like example, those bumper stickers, that would be pushing it, yes. Mr. Vickery's com- comments, if the website were to include that, that would be a push for no. And those are examples of things that the county cannot do. We can just simply say this is what it looks like. And that's a decision for you all to make and you can make that at any point in time.
Okay, so now, don't take this next one personal.
I don't take many things personal.
Good.
I'm dead in.
Because, because this one, I, I've got to ask this question. Nobody else is going to. You ready for this?
Fire away.
You're sitting down.
Well, hopefully you get it asked before lunchtime.
Well, this clock's broken, so.
This clock's broken, you know, so it's, you know, we got an hour and a half for lunch yet.
No, you have twenty, twenty minutes.
So, okay. So, Mr. Malinkovich, how's that sound?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Malinkovich.
Been called worse.
Yeah, that's so bad.
They call you Mr. Malinkovich too, Doug?
So since the inception of the fifth penny, you've been the lead in everything that has been brought forward on the fifth penny. Why is that?
Help me understand what you mean when you say the lead.
Well.
I have brought it up in discussion.
Yeah, but you've been, you've been, you've been the end, you've been the point person. And I sat right back here at a, at a meeting, or you did sat back there at a meeting. Last meeting, it said, you don't have a dog in the fight. But yet, pardon the pun, you've been the lead dog every place this thing, this discussion has been.
If you're trying to hang a policy position around my neck as the county attorney, that's not gonna work. So the reality of the situation is the reason it has come up in conversation, you are exactly right that this conversation has come up in the past multiple times. But the reason it's coming up now in the most recent is because Blue Spruce applied for an industrial permit. Part of that process put sublet county in the position as the host county to run that program, run that entire process, get the MOU, do the requests, so on and so forth, a statutory duty that sublet county was required to do. And you are correct that I took on the lead on taking care of sublet county's statutory duty. I got all the requests put together. I put together all the filings. I got everybody in the same room because that was our statutory duty. And yes, part of that conversation is a fifth penny. I am not pushing a fifth penny either way. The sublet county attorney's office by statutory duty does not make policy decisions or recommendations. So I'm not quote unquote pushing a fifth penny. I am simply doing my job over the last few months at leading sublet county through its required statutory duties with regards to the industrial siding process to the hearing last. to the hearing last week, to the approval of the dollars.
Okay, so.
And I won't be discussing how I'm going to vote on May fourth. But I will be doing my job as a citizen and I will be participating in that process as I hope everyone does.
Oh, I know I will. So so, uh, uh, the departments that have applied for part of this monies, will that all funnel to the commission and then they parcel it out? Or does it, how does that work? How will that work? Now, I'm, I'm, I know the towns, that's.
So all dollars come into Treasurer Parvissini first. They all come into her and then she divvies them out according to the ratio that goes to each town uh, and each uh, entity. So the, all the dollars will come into Emily. She will send the hospital district their chunk. She will send the Big Piney Airport their chunk. She will send Sublet, she will keep Sublet County's chunk. And then the other, the town of Big Piney and the town of uh, Pinedale and the town of Marbleton will each get their chunk towards their project. For example, the town of Big Piney is drilling a new well. And they're going to use their money to drill a new well and do a new, uh, a new water metering system for their, for their municipality. So that's what they're going to be using those dollars from. The dollars come in little by little over the, over the time period of the construction. So, and to just add a little bit more information, just for discussion sake, an election on May four results in the imposition of a tax in the event that it is passed. Those taxes begin the first day of the calendar quarter following sixty days after May four, which would be October first of twenty twenty six. So that's when the taxes would, in the event that it is passed, start being collected in October.
Okay, so.
So folks in Sublet County would have plenty of warning to go buy their car before October one.
Okay, so, so for discussions.
I love it.
Uh, I knew you would.
I'm getting so. I'm getting hungry.
Well, Max getting bored.
Not the only one.
So this, so here's one of my real bill, and God, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure you will, but as I understand that this great big windfall that everybody's anticipating comes in over twenty month increments. Is that correct? So if we have projects, which they all do, they've all got to have this, got to have that. How can you put together a project if you're going to wait for twenty months before you get the full pot of your pie or pot, part of your pie? In other words, for argument's sake, if I've got a project that's going to take twenty dollars, but I only get a dollar a month, by the time I get ready for my project, twenty dollars is not going to buy it because of inflation. So how how are the entities within the county going to be able to address their projects if they don't have the full dollar amount?
They're going to do it just like any other project that they do. All governmental entities. Uh, they don't get all their money all at one point in time. So if you look at the school district, they, their money trickles in periodically throughout the year as tax payments come.
Right, I'm not talking.
See, you see the school district as you're driving back towards home, they're building a building over there by the bus garage. They budgeted it, they got it, the dollars are coming in, they have capital expenditures, they have reserves. They do it just like any other project that any other entity has. So for discussion sake, Sublet County, one of the things that we were given money for was to buy a new motor grader. So in the event that this tax were to pass, dollars would come in that would allow road and bridge to buy an, a, a new motor grader. You're right, it does take a while to get that motor grader on order, so on and so forth. And that bidding and getting that thing purchased could be done through the county's existing reserves and then back.
Yeah, and therein lies.
The same exact way that the dollars come in for the paving of the Dry Piney Road, which is one of the, the other things that the, that Sublet County was awarded dollars to do. So it would be just like any other project that any other entity does. They work through what their reserves are and dollars that they have available.
Right.
Understanding and anticipating that dollars will trickle in over time.
Yeah, but, but but you, you just confirmed what my biggest suspicion is that everybody under the umbrella of the commissioners that have applied for money is going to say, well, we know the money's coming in, you guys backfill our project so we can get it done day one, not day twenty. And so the commission is going to be sitting here and thinking, you got to be kidding me, or they should. You guys applied for this money for this project, knowing it took twenty months to get it. Hang around, folks, twenty months, you'll have the money. Now you can do your project.
And the commission could do that.
I would hope they will.
Well, one thing I would point out is just backing up, just the use of the word windfall, I want to just address. So this isn't necessarily a windfall for Sublet County. The reality is the whole entire process for industrial siting, which is a statutory requirement that exists when a person is, when an entity is building a project over three hundred and fifty million dollars in construction costs. It is required because the legislature understood that when we add a number of people into the community, that it is going to have an impact on that community. So for example, the reason that the, the refunding request was built around what it was built around is the reality that the Dry Piney Road is straight and flat. And having a person like yourself who's driven a truck with a big load of, of stuff on it, you want the straightest flattest road possible to get from point A to point B. The entirety of the materials that are going to be going to that project are going to be looking for the slight, straightest flattest road to get there. They're not going to want to go up and over and around uh, to, to on Calpetto get there. So they're going to be driving on Sublet County's road, Dry Piney, which right now is dirt. And that was the reason that the request was done in order to help offset that cost for paving it. I don't care which way you want to skin this CAD. That project is moving forward. Fifth penny or no fifth penny, Sublet County is going to be in the situation where they're going to have to maintain Dry Piney Road. And that's going to have a cost to Sublet County. And those dollars are going to have to come out of the coffers of Sublet County either way. The whole point of the industrial siding process is to help offset some of those costs that are inherent and are going to be necessary.
Yeah, but in their wisdom, the legislature said, well, you can't have that money unless you stick another penny tax on your residents. Seemed to be a little bit of a, oh, there.
I think what, if I was to, to take from those legislative intent, from those conversations, my understanding of those conversations when that happened is the legislature looked and said, we want to help counties who are willing to help themselves. And that was the legislature's issue. Legislature didn't want to just hand out money when counties looking at revenue opportunities chose to disregard other opportunities for revenue.
Like raising taxes on the people.
I've heard from you multiple times, if we're having this conversation and everybody's bored about it, but we can still have it. I've heard from you multiple times that we've talked about this county budget. You've talked about it as though you, you do it to your own home and in your own house. What happens when times get tough? We tighten up the belt. But the other thing that happens when times get tough is we also look for other revenue opportunities. That is how we operate things. And so that's what the fifth penny ends up being. Ends up being an additional revenue source. Yes, revenue is a nice way of saying tax. But what also happens in that circumstance with a tax in this, in this situation? And this could be part of the county's educational information that is placed on the county website if the county wanted to, is the county could look at the numbers from twenty twenty four and they could say, this is the dollars that came to Sublet County as a result of sales tax. A sizable chunk of which are pay, is paid by individuals who do not live in Sublet County, but utilize the services that exist in Sublet County. And the county could put that dollar amount on there and say, this is what the potential revenue from a fifth penny is. And then taxpayers can look at it and they can make that decision and say, you know what? I am willing to pay that extra when I go buy my car because I also know that all of those out of state plates that I cuss when I'm trying to cross the street in July or turn left on Pine Street and I can't. Believe me, we all do it. I do it. And I say, why can't I turn left? It's because all these people are here spending money in Sublet County. And so ultimately, the county could choose to educate from the perspective of what additional revenue will come to Sublet County and the municipalities as a result of a fifth penny. And then voters can make that educated decision on their own.
Fair enough. We could go on forever, but our chairman is hungry. And so I'm going to leave it with this. I drove up the Dry Piney Road recently. And you know what? There's a lot of her that's not gravel. It's already paved.
It's not pavement, it's chip sealed.
It, well, whatever.
It's not the pavement, I just want to make.
But it's been, it's been taken care of heavy trucks for quite a while. Now to go one step further and then we're going to break for lunch. One more. In the boom days, in the Jonah and the Anticline field, there were thousands and thousands of truckloads of material, zit, 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 going everywhere. I drove out there the other day. There's not very many paved roads out there. They got by just fine. So we're going to have to pave this road? No, we will. I understand that. No, I'm.
Tyler, those are all perfect examples.
Oh, yeah. Well, paradise.
That's why the county paved it is because of additional trip traffic, which the county does, which Billy does. He does trip counting twice a year in order to budget and everything else. There is no question whatsoever. And I, I'm just letting you know from the conversations and the meetings that we had putting together the funding request. There is no question whatsoever that Dry Piney will have to be paved. And Sublet County can pay for it out of our own pockets and we can do that on the backs of all property owners within Sublet County or the county. Or in this circumstance, in the event that a fifth penny is passed, that tax burden will be shared on every person who comes into Sublet County and utilizes those services. So that's the decision we're talking about. And the county and all it is, is my suggestion in the email was that if you all want to include educational information, you can do it.
Well, it needs to be, it needs to.
For me to do.
Right, it needs to include all of it, not just part of it in my mind. And whatever that's going to be is what it's going to be. And then the people, if they decide to want to tax themselves, fine, I'm okay with that. But.
So if you, if you all want to do your, if you want to do that, you can make that decision and assign it to someone. And I will review the information to make sure that we're not stepping over that line into campaigning to help protect you all.
Okay, it's lunchtime.
More all motion to adjourn for lunch.
Yes. Before, before lunch.
Uh, do you just want to go ahead and do all of it now? You done with it?
Well, I don't know. Wait until before lunch.
Yeah, we have. Well, we have Janice and we have.
Well, lunch has been there for an hour.
We can do, we can do Janice and Haley and main play reports.
If we wanted to stick to.
We recapture our hour that we lost here.
Sounds great to me.
Motion.
Make a motion just the agenda to have Janice at the end of it.
Well, we can have a half hour lunch and nothing will be changed.
Breaking for lunch. Going back to order, please. Up next on the agenda is Janice Saxon. Pardon? Okay, you can move to the end. Up next, Haley Ruland. Mac, Mac put her to the end.
I were Mac put it?
Yes. Hello, Holly.
Having that giggle moment here today, ladies and gentlemen, take it in long.
Floor is yours. Would you move the microphone closer to you? Thank you much.
All right. Good afternoon. I put together a staff report of just what all we have going on in the office right now. Um, we've had a lot of permits coming in lately, just last minute permits. On the back of this form is a permit documentation for this past year for twenty twenty five and a comparison of other years where we stand with our fees and how much revenue we've collected just from our permits. And one thing that really stood out to me was just the number of septic permits that we've received this year. And it does seem like every year, though, septic permit seems to be top permit issued, top one or two permits issued as septic permits. Um, just wanted to point that out. Something we are looking at as well in the office is permit fees. I think that just reviewing our permit fees, just to see where we stand and possibly what could be adjusted would be something for this winter. If anyone has comments on permit fees, I don't think they've been changed for quite a while. But we've noticed some permits are not super time consuming, while other permits maybe require field inspections for septic or larger permits that require planning and zoning and county commissioner review and approval and public notices and newspaper advertising and reviews from other agencies. And all of that is, a lot of that, that fee is covered by the county. So. Um, we've been doing a lot of coordination with other departments and I just wanted to fill you in too. I went to a meeting last week. It was a organized through the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Council. And this is organized through the state. So they have about six employees that are doing this throughout the state. And they've identified recreation as a, as something that is a large employer and just a large opportunity in, in the state. So they have a new agency and they are starting this collaboration with different counties. And this was one of the first meetings that they had. So I just went to listen and I said, I'd be interested in just staying in the loop. I don't plan on attending more of these meetings, but I suggested that they reach out to the Sublet County Recreation Board for future involvement. So. But it seems like the goal is to bring in a lot of different parties that have interest in recreation and trying to find group projects to work on and find funding opportunities and just how can we expand recreation in the area? I just thought I'd fill you in on that. Um, Planning and Zoning Board, we have been working pretty, we've been working on the tower regulation. The last meeting, we started the discussion of the tower regulation and we have a special meeting coming up this Thursday evening to continue that discussion. And then the next regular scheduled meeting for planning and zoning is on November twentieth. And that will also include the tower regulations as well as a minor subdivision and request for zone change. And I did reach out also to the Wyoming Planners Association. And I talked to a couple of people just throughout the state. We are, you know, one of twenty three counties and a lot of these other counties are also going through very similar issues that we are. And as far as code of regulation drafting and some of the issues with permitting and just new state and federal requirements, we are not alone on this. So I reached out to the Wyoming Planners Association and they're willing to come to one of the planning and zoning meetings and just do a brief training or talk about different topics that we might be interested in. And if you guys are interested too, we could see about doing something with the commissioners, but they are a wonderful resource. they are wonderful resource and I feel like just having those other planners involved and possibly even the commission, the planning and zoning commission. There's opportunity for us all to become members of that association. And Holly came to the meeting as well, just to possibly talk with you guys a little more about what your thoughts were, what all you wanted to discuss today regarding the regulation drafting and where we are with planning and zoning with some of that.
So did she bounce that cue to make a statement of some kind or?
I'm not really sure. Um, so yeah, so she said, she said that you guys were wanting to kind of reference where we were at with the regulations and that. Um, so I gladly um, wanted to just come and give you a brief overview of where we are in that process. So, um, as you guys are probably well aware, with the transitioning of office staff and all of that, we kind of put a, we kind of put a temporary halt on it until we got everybody, till we got Haley in place and feeling more comfortable. And so but one thing that we pushed to the top of our agenda in regards to the regulations is coming up with a tag of tower regulation. Um, I'm sure you guys are aware, in the past, it's always been classified as a public facility. And we've had three or four in the last couple of months, applications, which is a lot. Um, I'll be honest, I had never had an application for one since I'd been on the board. And then we had three or four in like two months. And we had um, quite a bit of a public comment and feedback and some pushback on some certain things. Um, and one of the things that was that there was several people that questioned how we could even um, permit a communication tower because it's not clearly defined anywhere within our regulations. So we decided that it was definitely a point that we needed. We needed to address that directly head on and get tackle that task and get that regulation established. And um, then pass it on to you guys, hopefully for adoption of that amendment. So that is what we're currently working on. Um, is getting the communication towers regulation wrote and drafted up. And then from there, we plan on diving back in to hopefully get our our full rules regulations established.
It's amazing. There weren't any regulations pertaining to towers to begin with.
Right.
And all at once, we've been inundated with tower requests and we don't have regulations, they're going to start planting them all over. And so there's a reason we're having the regulation. And it's a tough one because everyone has different opinions and and there's, please, after you.
It's also really tough too, because there is a lot more um, technical things. And that's something that I have come to realize is that I didn't realize that there was so many technical things that go into like what you need for a tower, what to support, to to plan for the years ahead of what kind of a tower that they want to build like. And um, there's been some folks from Union and some folks from LR Communication that have been wonderful about giving us a lot of that information that none of us would know otherwise. And so they've been really good about, you know, filling us in on what the technical things that they require would be. So but yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot to it for sure. But it is something that like I said, we have come to realize quickly that we need to address it directly.
Thanks for doing that. It's a tough one. Then the other statement you made was in regards to moving back to working on the planning and zoning rules and regulations. Truly appreciate that. And that's a whole different bowl of spaghetti. No. We talked about that a couple of meetings ago. I'll go back two months. Commissioner Vickery brought in a list of items that he thought um, we may want to keep in mind as we start moving forward on that. And you're absolutely right. The commissioners are uh, remiss in not providing sufficient guidance on that, Holly. Uh, we recognize that. And as we talk about it, um, Commissioner White said, well, I have a list that I'd like to prepare and and bring and and utilize that. And I have one that I put together. And I think with taking that and coming up with basic uh, ideas of what the foundation should consist of will then give us a good path to go. And Commissioner Vickery, excuse me, Commissioner White said, um, and the board agreed that um, take the existing ones, planning and zoning goes through item by item and reviews everything and correct me at any time if I if I misunderstood. And then uh, Commissioner Bradley said probably needs to go all the way through the end because we were looking at it chapter by chapter, but there's items in chapter one that uh, referenced chapter 11. So to go through and create that and then it comes to us and then we would take the time and diligently go through um, and fine tune it, I believe, would be the correct phrase. Would that good recap, Sam?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So that's kind of where we're at. You know, well, and it's interesting because we have five individuals here and getting communication, everyone agreeing on what the heck should our movement be on this? And then we're coming back to you and saying, well, here, create it. But no one knows what the ground rules are and how do we do it?
And right.
We don't want to do this again in two years from now, do we?
No.
You're shaking your head yes. So I'm going, what the heck?
No.
So our apologies to planning and zoning, but uh, I think that we've come up with a path to move forward and address this.
Um, so one question I do have for you is um, I guess, just kind of a concern of mine is just ensuring that the legalities are there. I don't, because I feel like that there's a lot of things that um, we may all agree are great. But I want to make sure that we have resources that'll look over it legally to make sure that we're not doing.
And that's a very valid point. I brought that up to a client and he said, then you can do whatever you want. Um, and and then as we get it written, we'll bounce it off of Clayton to make sure that we're going the right direction. Yes, that's a thumbs up. Okay. So it'll be a information exchange between you and Clayton and between you and us and.
Okay.
So we're not going to leave you high and dry and say you face legal responsibility for this because we recognize that.
Right. Yeah, like I said, I think that that has just been one of my biggest concerns because I have reached out to um, some different uh, some of the different counties, because I know that Park County recently just completely revamped their rules and regulations. So I've just been trying to get some kind of reference of their process, not saying that we have to do follow the same suit. But I think this is all new to me as well. And so just trying to get some reference of because I think that's the thing is that if you can learn, if you can learn from other people's struggles or other counties' struggles of what process works best. So. Um, like I said, I, this, this does give me a lot better reference of the direction that we're heading now. And I appreciate that.
Of course. I think that it put all of us in a position where we don't know what we don't know and how are we going to do this? And it's taken us several months to get to this point. And so once we get the, and it's spoken in regards with Haley about when do you want it? She said, well, certainly not now with the towers that's kicking our rears. You know, so then once we get the towers behind us, then we'll go ahead and start with a complete package then.
Absolutely. And I think the one, one struggle that we're having with the towers is that we are legitimately like starting from scratch.
Absolutely.
We don't have any right now. And so we're just trying to make sure that we cover all of our bases. And like I said, very much so that we are looking forward to, that we're covering our bases for years to come and try to foresee anything that should come up that we.
And I think you'll find the same thing occurs when we sit down and start doing the regular booklet itself.
Right.
Yeah. So good. It's a great mic set to have. And I think Haley's a great wealth of knowledge here and.
Absolutely. She's fantastic.
Oh, boy.
Yes.
It's been nice.
Very thankful for her. She does a very good job. I'm very.
Yes.
I I do think it would be helpful once everyone can get thoughts together and compiled for planning and zoning to strategize how to move forward and come up with a plan because just looking at the at the regulations as a whole can be extremely overwhelming. And I think it would be helpful if we personally, I feel like if we did it by topic or somehow trying to review it in small chunks at a time rather than reviewing it the entire document. Um, but I agree, we can't just go chapter by chapter because there are a lot, there are several cross references. But for example, for the tower regulations, our plan on Thursday is to talk more about policy rather than just looking at a draft code regulation. It's let's talk about the overall policy. What do we want to see for policy? And then that will help us put a draft regulation together. So we have a whole list of questions that we're going to be going over on Thursday just about tower policy. So I think if we could look at it possibly from a topic perspective, then help us get your feedback on different topics. And what are, what are your thoughts about policy? Um, as we're looking at topics, but I I don't think we're quite there yet. But just something to think about of how do we strategize this once we get further into the that portion of the drafting. Um, I also think it could be just another idea of if there's any sort of interest of having a having someone on board on retainer to help us be a supporting piece to review documents for us. I think that Clayton is wonderful when it comes to the, to being able to review things from that regulation perspective. But possibly someone that also has experience with drafting regulations in other counties. But probably be on more of a retainer type basis where they're not doing everything, but they could be more of our second set of eyes to review things for us. Just something to think about.
Sure. At some point in time, if you'd like to uh, sit together and come up with a proposal and bring it forward, it would certainly be entertained.
I heard Whiskey Rock's looking for a job.
We should hire them last week.
Well, I, I think the whiskey rock deal. I don't think there were enough players involved in the game there. I think, I I think you know, obviously the department head was, but the zoning board themselves was pretty much left out of the loop as far as what was going on. I think it's critical if we're going to have a board that's going to help make decisions that they be involved in the process to get there. And so if we get and I think I'm reading, and correct me if I'm wrong, that maybe you'd like to see some sort of a consulting out there that would help with this? Or did I misunderstand what I thought you were asking?
I think it would be beneficial to have a consultant on retainer at least to help review documents as we're going through them. They've, that have done this in other counties. That's, that is just something that I think could be beneficial to provide some insight um, with their expertise of drafting other regulations. But not necessarily full depth writing the the regulations, but we're not there yet too. So I haven't. When it comes to any of the code drafting, the only thing I have been involved in at this point is the towers. So I haven't even looked at any other drafts that have been prepared for the other regulations.
So in my mind, let's get through the towers. Let's get it adopted. And maybe you guys look at the regulations and and break them down how you guys want to tackle, then bring a section forward. Can give your thoughts on where you ought to go on a section.
Okay.
At that point. For advice. Discuss. Anything else from the commissioners? Great. Thank you for everything you're doing. Appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
There's someone who's there.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Batina, you're unmuted. She had it raised quite a while ago.
Who's this?
Batina.
Oh, great.
Would you mind letting me know that?
Batina, you are unmuted.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry for the glitch there. When would the tower regulations go into effect?
Well, I'm sorry.
Please.
So it it still is in the process, Batina. So we will have this next meeting on Thursday. And then we'll have um, a meeting two weeks from Thursday on the 20th. And depending on hopefully, hopefully by then, we're pretty close to getting it through all of it. Um, as soon as we get it completed, then it will go before the county commissioners. Um, and then they have to okay it. And then it will be adopted after that.
So the other regulations that would be, and that process is such because we don't have, we're starting from zero. So they would go into effect immediately upon county commissioner approval. And then the other process would were starting from something. So when, so they would, the new revised regs would also go into effect upon county commissioner approval?
Yes, that's correct. And and that's exactly it is that we we don't have anything currently for the tower. So that's why it's been pushed forward to the front. And so we're going to get that addressed and completed and implemented. And then we'll focus back on the other regulations, but it will be the same process. It will go through um, the planning and zoning board and then on to the county commissioners for their approval before um, adopting the new regulations.
So any applicants would need to be aware of our process. And that's fine. They have to be aware of our process and our regulations.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. Uh, I would just uh, remind um, folks that the public should be invited into the process as we have been before. And perhaps there could be some um, additional types of announcements um, other than um, just the newspaper announcement that this is going to occur. I'm not sure what the best mode would be, but I just want to make sure uh, I I state that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everything, Batina. Okay, great. Anything else? Thank you for coming today, Holly.
So absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Haley, thank you. Up next. Janice. Okay, Mac?
Nobody's left. It must be you.
Oh, we've talked about everything that I wanted to talk about. So. Um, Mr. Chairman, the first thing that I had on my list was the procurement policy and that has already come up. Do you feel like the base was covered on that today to with the steps that you asked to occur with Billy and Clayton?
That would be the initial steps in regards to road and bridge. And then we can, I believe, adopt it coming over into the entire.
Okay, so nothing that I need to be working on on that, correct?
Not at this point in time, Clayton. Would you agree? You have it under control? I could tell. Um, we were talking about a procurement policy. Countywide, and we said that we would work on road and bridge, get that together. And then once that has been um, put to bed, we can carry that forward to the entire departments, all the departments.
Sure. Whenever you want to do a procurement policy, just let me know. And there's plenty of examples and opportunities around the state that we can look at.
Great. Appreciate it.
So we're doing a full-fledged procurement policy?
That's what you need.
I wasn't asked. It was a question.
Are we only doing maintenance?
I thought it was just vehicle maintenance.
Well, it's a great question. We can do just maintenance or across the board. That's up to the board to decide. Either way is fine.
How physically responsible you guys actually want to be? Good answer.
Sound like it came from a lawyer.
Would you, would, would you say that?
I'm pushing this via opinion. We don't got to be as responsible.
Why do you say?
Well, that's what I heard somewhere I thought today.
So what we could do is see how it goes for the road and bridge. And then have a conversation of what we wanna do at that point.
Hey, I'm good with whatever.
So this vehicle maintenance, are we gonna include in this policy time that we get rid of these things, like mileage or amount of maintenance done on them? Is that gonna be included in this, or is this just go get your service and tires at shop?
Uh, that's what, uh, Billy and Clayton are going to be developing.
Just let Billy know that it changed.
He's back there.
Great, great. Go ahead, Janice.
All right, um. Chairman Bernard came in on Monday and signed the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan Amendment comments. You guys, I believe, had authorized that signature between meetings before. So I don't know that it actually has to be ratified. Not sure how that works. But if it does need to be, we should do that.
Clayton?
If you guys did it before your meeting, when it has not been voted on, yeah.
Okay, so that they, they gave him authorization to sign between, but they, okay. Um, and then along those lines, I sent you comments. We had talked at the last meeting about the conservation landfill rule. Those comments are due on November tenth. I sent you a draft of those. I don't know if you had the opportunity to review those, uh, that, I, I don't know what day I sent them. Anyway, I have those here. If you liked them, you could get them signed today. If you want changes to those, we would probably want to do the same thing where we authorize the chairman to sign between meetings. So however you wanna pursue with that.
Think we're good to go on that? Are we not?
Everybody didn't work.
Have an auth- authorization from Sublet County for the Conservation and Land Health Rural Recision to, uh, Secretary Burgum.
Want a motion to approve this? Will you sign it?
Yep.
And make a motion to approve prove the statements to Secretary Burgum for conservation, conservation and landscape health.
Have a motion as a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I opposed? Thank you.
I sent an email last week to the pilot program users of AI, and I got a lot of feedback. Um, I asked a few questions in that kind of what's, what's going well? What are you struggling with? And do you need any additional training at this time? And the general consensus is people are using it. They're finding new uses for it. It's going well for most. Um, of course, with the caveat to double check the results. But they feel like they still want more time to use it before they want any additional training. So um, it, it seems to be going very well for most users, though. Okay, and I said some of the things I wanted to talk about. There was discussion about education on a fifth penny. Did you want me or anyone else to put together education documents? And at what point do you wanna do that later? And then, like you had mentioned, that perhaps we could do it closer to the election. What kind of, how are you guys looking at that?
I think we have to get that there sooner than later, myself. I'm good.
Well, I I think more information earlier is better than later, but that's just me. Give people an opportunity to delve into it if they so desire to see what it is, rather than wait, say, two or three weeks before.
It's many, right? I mean, nobody even knows it's coming at this moment, I suppose. The downs are gonna put anything out there that it's coming or?
So maybe wait till they make a, some sort of a public notice?
Well, I think, I think, I think this, I think, you know, this is gonna be a big deal, quite frankly. And so I think the public who's gonna make that determination needs to have time enough to check the facts, put it like that. And I don't think it would hurt to put out a little something now, and then as time gets closer, maybe follow up with maybe the same thing. I don't know, but, you know, we have a tendency, at least I do. I'll forget about it two weeks from now or three weeks from now, and then all of a sudden it shows up. So darn, I remember that now. So I think it's, for me, better served to have a little reminder occasionally.
So is it something you wanna get out and put on the website, and then we run an ad in the paper?
Something to that effect, yeah.
People see it, time to see, get something gathered.
Okay, and it will not go up until you all approve it and Clayton approves it. I I'll put it together to the best of my ability, and you guys can do what you will with it. Um, let's see. I don't have a lot of information about this, not because I don't have it, but because I haven't had the opportunity to go through it yet. But I did wanna let you know briefly that we did get awarded that Western States Louis Grant with Twin Eagle that we presented. We just received notification that that award was authorized, so we'll be working with them. That's about all I can tell you at this point. I do have a lot of documentation on it. And, um, have been at a meeting with Chad and Emma and Josie on it, but just wanted to make you aware that it is coming.
Good, thank you.
Um, I don't think there's anything that it, we did ask for authorization prior to applying for that grant, and you were all aware of it. I think it meets all the requirements of our grant policy, but I would suspect that if there is anything that is outside of that, it would be grandfathered because we had spoken to you about it previously. So and we'll see where that goes, but more to come on that. And then the state of the county budget message, um, what did you guys wanna do there? Did you want to ask kind of Roundup to write that as they're preparing the rest of the documentation? Or did you guys wanna draft something? Did you wanna use? What was drafted, been sent to you? How, how would you like to proceed with that? And let them know.
And you got my response.
I did get your response. Just move forward with that. I will let them know that I didn't hear from you. Okay.
Yep, please.
And then I think maybe the last thing is the House Enrolled Act fifty-nine, which was that perpet- gaining perpetuaries from the state across state land with Skylar Wilson. Primarily with his work, we passed that information on to the state. They have let us know that generally speaking, they have everything they need. They've they and we feel like Sublet County is in pretty good situation. But they wanted to make it clear that they're gonna be sending a, a final list of roads. And it's not by any means final. They're calling it final, but we have five more years. So if something comes up that we find we don't have an easement or we need something, we still can pursue it for those five years. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, and then, you know, we did submit the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan comments, but there, they they extended the deadline on those. And they are gonna have a public meeting on December third from three to six at the Sweetwater Events Complex to educate the public on that. So if anybody has any interest in going they, they extended that deadline to December eighteenth. So if you gain any new information or go to that and feel like we need to amend our comments, we still have that opportunity.
It'd be subject to change. It might not be working.
I know. Well, we'll see. What are we, thirty-five days or something like that now? All right, I think, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for you. You guys have anything for me?
Questions for Janice? Okay, uh, please stay there.
Oh, uh-oh.
Uh, then we can go into are there any monthly reports, beverage permits, Cessar?
Emily did not have any for this meeting.
And Leila has nothing. Great, thank you. Move on to old business and Jessica, would you join us, please? Okay, we're doing a follow-up in regards to OpenGov and person training. If you'd be kind enough to give a overview and synopsis of this, please.
Um, so after our meeting at the beginning of October, I asked OpenGov to send us the cost for an in-person training for two days. Um, and they said, they took quite a while, but they sent me back a quote. I don't know if that's something that they don't usually provide, but it took a very long time for them to get back to me. Um, and they sent me back this statement of work and, um, a quote for fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. So.
And what can we accomplish with this training? Or is it after researching it, is it something that's not worth doing?
Um, I would what I would like to do is they sent me all the resources that they have on their website or that they have available for myself and, and my staff, um, is to first make the time to take all those trainings and see where we're at. Um, I feel like I would love to schedule an in-person training just because you, you've gained so much knowledge from having firsthand experience and having someone work with you. Um, but at the same time, I just, we didn't budget for a training for fifteen thousand dollars, so I'd like to just
I think it would encompass more than your office, though, would it not? Are there other people that do reports within OpenGov? Are you the only department that utilizes it?
Uh, I, I think that, that a lot of the departments probably reference it on a monthly basis or maybe more often. I don't know.
Chairman, I don't know at this stage of the game how it is. It, it was, uh, when we first got OpenGov, the county clerk at the time I don't mean to make this sound negative, but kind of withheld the normal YCats reports that they were used to getting to kind of push them into using OpenGov. And I think some jumped on board at that, but I don't know at this point how much other, other departments are using it on any kind of regular basis. We could certainly pull them and find out.
Be a good idea, and if you wanna go through and do the online training, um, then you can come back a later date, whenever it's appropriate. How's that?
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you. Additional old business.
I do too. I just need to catch you all for a signature on the user, credit card user agreement before you leave. If you plan on using the credit card.
Oh, we don't need to have one for Doug, but the rest of us will sign.
Terrible.
Oh.
A factual statement.
So, uh, this came up today, cuz I'm headed to a meeting in
Okay.
An hour.
Oh, great, thank you.
Uh, Colorado Ditch. We haven't talked about this in a while because we've still been waiting on getting exact allocation numbers. But there's a meeting this afternoon, and we're getting kind of down to the fact that the county has not paid for its share of the storage for, this is going on the second year since those guys have been paying their fifteen thousand. So to refresh everybody's memory, uh, there's a lake just to the north here. It's called Fremont Lake. Um, and they store water in there, and the federal government and its infinite wisdom has decided to change the way that they, uh, charge water storage users for those dollars. So the total fee for the water storage, for all water storage in Fremont Lake is fifteen thousand dollars, give or take. I think that's the number. And sorry, I'm bouncing back. The, the email that I was pulling from this was February, so I apologize if over the eight, last eight months, I'm not remembering exactly the things correctly. For all intents purposes, that fifteen thousand dollars is, needs to be split up among all users. All folks who store water in Fremont Lake that use it for a variety of reasons. There's a few ditches that come off of there. There's the Highland, there's the Lee, and there's the Little Colorado. So the Little Colorado comes down, goes through, works its way on Town of Pine are the two larger shares of that ditch agreement. Or are the, the two larger appropriators of water on the Colorado Ditch. That Colorado Ditch storage allotment accounts for seven point two six five two percent of the total storage in Fremont Lake. So the Colorado Ditch accounts for approximately one thousand fifty-seven dollars and change of the fifteen thousand dollars to store all the water, all the stored water in Fremont Lake. We have yet to be able to get the exact allocation and accounting to determine how much is the towns, how much is the counties, and how much go to the other, uh, the other users. For all intents purposes, the other users is gonna be probably in total less than ten percent of the seven percent. So realistically, we're talking about the Town of Pinedale and Sublet County are the lion's share users of the water. What had been proposed and discussed and what is being floated yet again, because we do not have that full accounting completed, and we're not seeing that happening anytime in the near future, is to simply have the Town of Pinedale and Sublet County as the lion's share users step up and pay for that one thousand fifty-seven dollars and change, and just split it right now until we can modify that payment, once we actually can figure out exactly how that allocation is set up. The current numbers that are coming out of there actually have a double allocation somewhere. And so it's really wonky. It's, I think ultimately, when it comes down to it, the Sublet County will be closer to thirty percent. Um, and, but we just, we don't have those numbers. So for simplicity's sake, the idea is being floated. Town and county, split the thousand, the thousand fifty-seven, call it good until we know more, and then update it.
Who's coming up with these numbers and trying to find the allocation in front of the bill?
So Mike Jackson was working with the State Engineers Office and going back and forth with them. We're waiting for all, for as I understand it, for all, excuse me, for all intents and purposes, we are waiting on the State Engineers Office to be able to give us that final allocation. Of who has, of, of, of that seven percent and change, how much is the counties, how much is the tent?
Seems like we should play as slow as they are. Because if we wanted to do anything, enlargement or anything on that ditch, they would request that we have every single user that has an allocation sign off.
Yes, that's true.
And, and they're not making that. They want their money. They'll just, uh, help county pay it. My mind would send them a letter and say, when you have everybody's allocation figured out, we'll pay our share.
So we're not paying the money to the State Engineers Office. It's to the feds.
Understandable, but the State Engineers Office is required to find all that information on that ditch.
Correct. And in the meantime, the Lee Ditch, the folks, uh, I mean, the Highland Ditch operators, they're the ones that are operating the ditch, and they're the ones that are paying the total fifteen thousand. So they're paying the fee right now. So when we're saying we're not gonna pay until it's allocated, we're really, the county is realistically saying to the Highland Ditch operators, we're not paying our share of the thousand fifty-seven that needs to be paid to you that they're paying. So we're not So we're not stiffing the state, we're not stiffing the engineers' office or anything else. We're essentially stiffing private landowners who operate off of the Highland Ditch. So realistically, it's, it's five hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty fifty seven. And you guys just basically said to Mr. Greeno that you weren't going to up your rent. That would have covered the six hundred bucks that would have covered this.
Well, wait a minute. You're saying you guys, you're talking to Mike and he's what? He's the one that you're talking to, not talking to the rest of us yet.
You guys.
Haven't got, you haven't got our impression.
But I'm just letting you know that the you guys includes you all who didn't increase rent on Mr. Greeno, but you said that we'll think about increasing rent in five years. That would have covered this.
We take on a helicopter for five hundred thousand, so we need to make up that five hundred thousand. We should learn if it's a. Out here at the golf course.
And if it's on the back of the Highland Ditch owner, ditch users, then so be it. Is that what you're saying?
The State Engineers Office, anytime you deal with them is a headache.
Correct. But the reality is, is the golf course is using that water. We have been continuing to use it.
People who are allocated use have some power and say over that also. They may not even know they have a use, but according to the State Engineers Office, they do. So they ought to pay for something.
The vast majority of the folks on the Little Colorado is the town and the county.
But the others still have power. If you want to do anything there, you got.
Yes, for Highland and Lee. But the reality is, is the folks that live over on Diamond T that have a fraction of a percent.
A quarter acre out there that has that water, right? They have a say on what goes on in that ditch.
The water's coming in and we need to, like, the county needs to pay for its allocation.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
So my suggestion in working with the town of Pinedale, this is, this is kind of where we went round and round and round back in February, and we were hoping to have numbers out of the State Engineers Office, and it has not happened to date. But the idea, the thought process is like, hey, let's just get some money headed towards the permit. We'll iron this out. Once we have the numbers out of the, out of the State Engineers Office, then we can figure out how to try and, well, try and get that, try and update the agreement with the town so that they're paying, paying their appropriate ratio share. County's paying its appropriate ratio share. And we're spending sixty-five dollars on a stamp or whatever it is to mail invoices over and over again to the folks that live on Diamond T when their share is probably sixty-five cents.
So, so what about the folks? Not the town and not the county that are on the Little Colorado.
We don't, we don't really know, we don't know what their exact percentage allocation is at this point. And given the fact that nobody knows what it is, we can't really go to each of those property owners and say, hey, pay up your your seventy-five cents that you owe. And candidly, right now, we don't know how much is the counties and how much is the towns. And so it's essentially just, the idea is right now, let's just split that baby. We'll figure it out later.
Okay, so we're going to pay it now. I have no objection to paying it. But then down the road, the folks who have allocation out of there, we're going to send them a bill for their seventy-five cents. Is that how it's going to work?
Theoretically, once we get the allocation from the State Engineers Office, we would then, likely the clerk's office, put together a letter and mail it to them and then mail another one, mail a third one, and then that would have been three times what their share is that we used in postage or we could have just paid it.
So is anybody pushing the State Engineers Office to come up with these numbers?
That is a good question to which I don't know the answer to. I'm headed to the meeting this afternoon at three, and I just want to be able to say count that the county is on board. In principle, the county is on board to the point where Sid Lynn has signed this, and then that puts it, puts it in the lap of the town of Pinedale to then do the same thing. Or I can go in there and say Sublet County's not doing anything until the State Engineers Office does something.
So is the town of Pinedale up to speed on all this? Because they weren't up to speed on the fifth penny. I'm just curious to know on this one.
Again, if I had the opportunity to tell Mr. Murdoch that he was wrong, I would do it. I'd love to do it. I love telling anybody they're wrong, especially you, Mr. Vickery.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I like telling you that you're right.
Okay, so anyway, I'm in favor of paying our share. Five hundred bucks is probably not going to break the county, although I do know we're in a downfall in revenue. But for five hundred, we should be able to find that somewhere.
I heard earlier we got piles of money in reserve.
Yeah, we have enough to cover five hundred dollars. I don't know about everybody else, but I'm in favor of taking care of our share.
And and understanding that we don't know that this is exactly what our share is. It is.
Yeah, no, I know, but this is going to be pretty close.
It, for all intents and purposes, it's five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a fraction of a percentage of your overall budget, and it makes sure that the Highland is not carrying the full load on their own. And I apologize for the informalities that were, of which our conversation, it's late in the hour and I know we're all tired being here, so. If you guys are on board with this memorandum, it literally just says, we recognize it's a memorandum of understanding between the town and the county, basically saying we recognize that of the of the Fremont storage, Colorado Ditch is seven point two six five two of it, and the town and the county are going to step up and just pay each of it half of that until we have more of an, until we have the accounting completely done, and then we will update and amend the script.
Good enough.
Okay. Questions? Have we heard anything from the peanut gallery over here? Daughter? Okay. Do you guys, do you guys want to go ahead and sign this today, or do you want me to just take it and say, hey, the town, the county is on, is on board with this? We'll get it to you in a few weeks.
Does it matter?
Candidly, I would like to be able to go in there and put it on the town and say, now it's your turn.
Yeah, let's, let's do it. It's no sense of putting off that.
So that's a motion from Doug.
I can make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm headed to that meeting at three, so if anybody else wants to go, or I'll give you an update once I get back.
Okay.
Bert?
Did you reach up and turn that clock back to? Did you get that one?
I sure did.
So stick with me, Doug. Just five more minutes, okay? No squirrels.
I'm just curious. I just saw the.
Yeah, I know.
Both have gotten changed.
So I received an email from, and this is the oddest thing, and Clayton's, I shared this with him. It's called The Dennis Quaid Show Viewpoint. Did everyone receive this? I think I forwarded, I forwarded. Do we want to follow up on this?
Yo.
Plan is going to be presented by Sublet County.
Yeah.
Represents the normal, the standard normal person from Sublet County.
Yeah, we can do better.
Or words, not like.
Yeah, I know it. I'm honest. So you've gone through and maybe read it, maybe not, maybe gone to the.
I thought it was a scam.
Well, that's what I thought also.
I'm sure it is, isn't it?
I think I forwarded it, Sam, on the twenty-eighth. I think so. Someplace in there. And I still think it's a scam. Pardon me? As, as did I. Has anyone been to the, to the site to look at this?
Oh, no, that's first part of the scam. That gets you there.
Well, exactly. I didn't want to do it on my computer. Clayton, would you run it on yours?
Dennis Quaid was not wanting to be with me.
No, it doesn't say any names. It says our county. So what we're referring to, for those still online, I'm sorry, is they're shaking their head right now, and I would too. This is from the production assistant for Anthony Davis of the television show Viewpoint hosted by Dennis Quaid. Senior producer Anthony Davis is producing a positive and educational documentary television series focusing on discover America, great places to live, raise a family, visit and start a business. Viewpoint is an educational documentary style television program which runs nationwide on public television. Television is broadcast as commercial news breaks on CNN, Headline News CNBC, Fox Business Learning Channel and Discovery Channel, to name a few, and is distributed on the internet by a narrow casting. He will interview a few guests in your region and ultimately select a few experts to participate in the program on this given topic. If you haven't seen our program, they provide a link and please respond as soon as possible if we're interested.
Here's your website. It's bona fide. It's on, like, it's.
It's on the internet, so it must be true, right?
It's an actual bona fide show. It's on, like, it's been on the air since twenty twenty. If you guys want to participate in it, you're more than welcome to. You could just, you could just assign it to Janice. She's candidly the friendliest and most personal person.
Either, either Janice or Doug for the color portion of it, right?
We, you, what, what?
We could use both of them together.
Oh, good lord.
Does anyone want to do this?
Count me out. Dave?
Is there any value to this?
I don't do policy. That's you.
Well, it's not policy. It's a question, as far as what of doing this.
County that would be here about the time the fifth pin year old.
Well, not.
Diversity by the record, it's means.
I'd be here to vote. They're not going to vote. They're just coming to spin that.
It's up to you guys. It does, like, you could respond and act like, get more information and see what it actually looks like. I don't even know what it looks like. Does it look like you doing, sitting down for an interview? That's what it appeared to be.
Yeah, why are you asking me?
It looked like from the email that somebody sits down and is interviewed and answers some questions, and they have like a little spiel, and they say, this is what Sublet County is, and they have some B-roll of some ranchers pushing some stuff up the draft.
Yeah, well, I don't want them.
We have a hikers, mounds. It just says what it says. It's essentially free publicity for the county.
Would you be kind enough to follow up asking what it entails and what they're looking for, please? Thank you.
So we just signed Janice up to be the participant, is what I heard.
Would you stop that? Because I had it go in the right way. Okay.
You know, everybody has a breaking point, even Janice.
Okay, so.
Better be careful.
Okay, so the.
You just get the chair.
We did, we need to sign credit card authorization forms. Do you want to pass those? If you don't want them, that's fine. No, he shook his head. No. Yeah. Did you want one, Sam?
Oh, he already, he already got it.
Okay, thank you.
You'd sign that on department head and then just fill in your name on it. Fill your name in there and.
Use the page number, right? I don't really think I need one.
In.
And, but you don't have to use it.
Yeah.
That's all I think I need.
I believe, I believe there will be just one card for the commissioners, so Janice will hold it and.
Exactly.
Or other nations.
Okay, do we have any further old business? Open it up to public comment for those online, if there is any, please.
Come on, how's their hand raised?
Please.
You would just let it push.
Hello, you're. Who is it? Bettina, you're online, please.
She has.
Please, if you're on mute, unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. I, thank you. I wondered if you had gotten back the report yet from YDOT on the Daniel Junction area of one eighty-nine to one ninety-one that you had requested from them. I have an ancillary issue associated with that.
Have anyone, has anyone seen that?
Every request.
I thought it was part of the zoning approval. Yes, please. Bettina, we're going to get Haley Ruland to come in. She's planning a zoning.
Oh, all right. May I tell you my issue that I've, that I've been in touch with YDOT on this morning, then, at the same junction?
Of course you may.
Okay, they took down a very tall light at that intersection earlier this year and replaced that lighting. They said that, that those tall lights are liable to fall down. And that's why they took it down. They replaced that one light with several smaller lights along both highways one ninety-one and one eighty-nine. But there is no longer a light at the specific point where the two roads intersect. So I've been in contact with YDOT to tell them, I believe that's a very unsafe situation currently. Having, having used that intersection a lot, especially in wintertime. Thank you.
You're welcome. This is Bettina Sparrow, and she's wondering if you have received a traffic study from YDOT on the property out one ninety-one, one eighty-nine, front of the old George Ram property.
This is for the Mountain Meadow subdivision?
Yes, that is correct.
My understanding is that a traffic study was not required with the subdivision in that YDOT recommended that depending on the use with each of the properties that at that point a traffic study may be required depending on the individual uses. And I see that there is, this can create problems down the road when each lot is developed individually, where one, one lot owner may not trigger any improvements with the intersection, but then collectively they may. So I do think, and I think we had added something to the preliminary plat regarding future traffic studies that they would need to be, they may need to be submitted to the county or to YDOT with the developments of each of the lots.
It was my understanding that the commission requested another traffic study prior to any further movement on that project. Maybe I misunderstood.
I know there were concerns about speed limits and a request of a speed study in the area, but I do not recall any additional traffic analyses for that area. And I'm sorry, this was prior to my starting full time, so I'm trying to just remember.
I thought that we had done it also, so we ran parallel to what Mr. Moyes had up by Forty Rod Road. Rather than say this parcel of property needs to have a first traffic study and this one does not. And I think we went ahead and did both.
Boy, I want to hear that again. I don't think we did.
I would need to go get check, check notes, because I'm sorry, I cannot recall if any additional traffic analysis was required, but I do believe YDOT said no improvements were required at that intersection. And I actually had questioned this as well during my my, I did a small review of the application and I questioned, I had questions about the intersection.
It was, and it was all, it was the ingress egress of that, of the road into the property. Jessica, you had your hand raised?
Just going back to the minutes from that meeting. You want me to just read the whole thing about that Mountain Meadows, not a super long paragraph? I was trying to remember. She says.
Would you like to come forward, use the microphone so Bettina can hear you? Thank you. Thank you.
I'll just move forward to where you made a motion. So Commissioner White made a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the following conditions. The CCR matched the county's restricted uses by right and conditional use. That the maintenance and upkeep, upkeep of the fire system will be the burden of the property owners through the HOA's CCRs. That the plat does not have block one and block two, instead consists of lot one through six. That lot six is tied to the master plan and will need to come back to the board for approval. That the plat contains any changes made to the highway in the future will be at the future landowner or property owner's expense. And then seconded by Commissioner Bradley, four to one, Commissioner Stevens opposed motion carried. So it doesn't look like there was any discussion of the.
I think that last, the only thing that relates to it is that the plat can, oh, I'm sorry, now where is it?
Contains any changes made to the highway in the future.
Yes, that any changes made to the highway in the future be at the future landowner or property owner's expense. And at that time, when a building permit comes in, the county can require, we will, we can reach out to YDOT as far as if a traffic study is required, but because this is a YDOT highway, they are the ones that are regulating the improvements. Even if we think there should be an improvement, YDOT might not necessarily agree if an improvement should be made.
Thank you for that, Haley. Bettina, did that answer your question?
Uh, well, it did partially. As, as I'm remembering now, the, the issue was mostly on, as Haley mentioned, the speed of, uh, being rather high, coming off of highway one ninety one onto one eighty nine and then making that turn into the, the new subdivision. It's my bad memory, I guess, that led me to believe that the commission had, um, requested a look by YDOT at the potential for changing the speed limit or putting up new signage or something. So if, if I'm wrong, I stand corrected. Um, I, I was just, my net, my follow-up was going to be if there is the result of such a study or review, um, uh, how would the public be notified of the results?
If, if we do a speed study, this, we can request for YDOT to conduct a speed study. Personally, I, I think it would be wise to wait until, until the development is approved to do the speed study. We could have one that we can request one to be done by YDOT and they will provide a report. And it will just say what the, what the average speeds are and they typically will assign the speed limit based off of the ninetieth percentile in the area, um, of what that speed is. As far as it becoming public, those, those reports are not, they are pub, like, we could have that available, but it's not something that we would be necessarily sending out to the neighbors. Um, I think it would be wise though, also after development occurs, once, once there's a little more activity in that area to do a speed study at that time. Once, once the development is there, because that's when we'll see a little bit more of the traffic coming at that intersection.
Okay, very good. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
So, so Bettina?
Yes, sir.
Doug Vickery, so to back up a couple of years, we've tried to get that speed, uh, downsized to fifty five to no avail from YDOT. So and we've, we've offered, uh, two or three different reasons why, one of which at that point in time was the termination of that game fence, which would channel all the game right onto the highway. Uh, we didn't get to square one, so I don't know where this is going to go with that development there, but YDOT has been very, uh, lax in wanting to uh, lower the speed limit. Same thing in Bondurant. Uh, that area up there is the same thing. We've asked for that to be slowed down through the, through the town and through the adjoining ranching, ranching industries there. And they've just said, no, we can't do it. We won't do it. Our studies indicate that it's not necessary. So uh, we'll see where this one goes, but I agree, there should be at least a slowdown through that portion of that road.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Haley, thank you.
And I am happy to, we want to do a speed study to reach out to YDOT. There is.
We only have a preliminary approval on it right now, so. Any questions, comments, concerns? Motion to dismiss? Second? All in favor? I host. Thank you so much for attending, everyone.